Good morning, and I'll call the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty two Administrative Briefing and Work Session of Marion County School Board to order at nine AM. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. And I ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the School Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular item, the Clerk will call speakers' names and the orders received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. Thank you, Chair Cummings.
We now begin our work session with, um, Bill Hoffman.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. When we left off yesterday, we left off with fifty-six-ten, so that is probably where we're going to pick up this morning. I will also note for the Board that I did come up with a definition in conjunction with Mr. McFadden of the school safety officer that I'll run by the Board prior to just putting it in. And I'll turn it over to Attorney Whitmer here to kick us off.
Good morning, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Madam Superintendent, good morning. This is our third workshop in this series. We have made a list of those policies that we haven't had consideration by the Board yet, or not, or haven't, the Board hasn't made final view of them. And we wanted to start today with fifty-six-ten-oh-five, participation in extracurricular activities, which is the policy that explains how students can participate in extracurricular activities. And there was some discussion yesterday, and that's where we wanted to pick up this morning.
Fifty-six-ten-point-zero.
Five.
Five.
It's in the group on.
That was the one.
That's page six-ninety.
Right. That was the one that we were discussing about, the absences as far as the athletes and things. Okay.
There is no attendance requirement at this time in this policy.
Right.
You also do have a policy fifty-two-hundred called attendance, which talks about truancy court and all that.
Yeah. But that doesn't speak directly to extracurricular.
No, because there is no such limitation right now.
And from my understanding, the Florida High School Athletic Association does not have a attendance requirement either, but I think as a responsible district, if we're concerned about our students being successful and the holistic well-being of the student, then we need to make sure that we're putting something in.
Does Neola have a policy?
Excuse me?
Does Neola have a policy, like a model policy in this area?
This is what the model policy is, if there's no attendance part to it for extracurricular, because some Boards believe in that and others aren't less so, so.
So I think the question lies with, is it something that needs to go in, the student code of conduct or the student discipline code, I guess, here, and then the athletic code of conduct? But our overall conversation yesterday was because if it's not actually in policy, how are said coaches, athletic directors, administrators held accountable for the attendance of their students participating in extracurricular activities? And I think that's where we kind of landed, and I'm not sure. I felt like we were saying perhaps for Dr. Gullett and her team to come back with suggestions for us on what, because while we may want to put an attendance policy in there, we also don't want to make it so limiting that it deters from students being able to participate, for whatever reason that might be, I don't know. I mean, certainly if those who are truant and actually at that level of egregious attendance and absences.
One of the points in the truancy process, that bright line point would be where the Superintendent has made a recommendation for referral to truancy court. That's where the school has tried everything it can, and the parent is either unable or unwilling to bring the child to school. And then that then is referred to the court, and if your district has that process in place, then that would be one possible bright line. The other way you could specify would be just the number of absences, so many absences in so many days. Every ninety days, I think you could have a, you know, or every, whatever.
I think, actually, we had notes on this one that we had put it back into the Superintendent's hands, and this is not one that we should be looking at right now. It went back to the Superintendent for review, and we're waiting for them to bring us something back. So can we move on to the next?
Do you have?
Chair, if I may.
Oh, do you have some, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The staff did, they've been working very, very hard. This was submitted, Attorney Powers, to you, with edits inclusive of language on C and B with regard to Marion County Public Schools athletic transfer procedures. That was submitted. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll get that one submitted to.
So pending edits.
For edits. Okay.
For discussion, I guess. But it's in an email probably, not in a way that can.
Yeah, so we won't, we won't look at that one today. So we'll move forward. I think the next one was fifty-six-thirty, that one was pending edits from staff as well. And then we, at length, we ended on fifty-seven-seventy-one, search and seizure. That's the one that we were laboring with prior to adjournment yesterday. So I guess we want to pick up from there, Attorney Powers, fifty-seven-seventy-one, search and seizure.
Yes.
Sure thought we got that one where we wanted it. Maybe we didn't.
I think, yes, we had a lot of discussion on that item, and I think that we had, had come to some resolutions, however, I don't think it was complete. So let's pull that up. Fifty, fifty-seven?
We changed, we actually took out something about intimate.
Fifty-seven-seventy-one.
We did.
We took out something about the search.
We changed the sentence structure and.
We wanted to make sure we still were in compliance with Neolas and not going beyond. What page is that on? Yeah, that's it. There you go. Thank you. We added that second paragraph.
Right.
Only in exceptional circumstances were there, when there is an immediate threat to the health or safety of students or others will a search of a student's person or belongings being conducted. I think what we took out was the intimate belongings.
Personal belongings, right.
Right. So if we're good on that, we can actually move.
Seven-oh-four, right, that's page seven-oh-four for us. What we, what we did not include there, and this is where I believe we said we would encourage the Superintendent to have as a part of policy, or a part of procedure, is how those, how these exceptional circumstance searches would be conducted.
Right.
But not to actually have it written in policy, how that would be.
Right, right. I think the suggestion was that, we understood that this is basically talking about no-touch searches, pretty much no-touch searches, and that some of this has to, a lot of this has to go back to staff on training and how they're being told to do search. Am I, am I back on the right page yet?
Yes. I'm waking up.
Yes.
No.
Is that where we are, Attorney?
Yes, sir. Okay, so that being the case, was there anything else within the remainder of this policy that the Board wished to discuss? I mean, it does also go into Board authorizing use of canines, again, when the Superintendent has reasonable suspicion that illegal drugs or devices may be present in a school. This means, this means a detection shall be used only to determine the presence of drugs in locker areas and other places on school property where such abscences could be concealed. Canine detection must be conducted in collaboration with law enforcement authorities or with organizations certified in canine detections, not to be used to search individual students unless a warrant's been obtained prior to the search. So I would recommend that that language be kept as is unless anyone has any particular interest in discussing an alteration.
I think this is fine, the way we've edited it, if other Board members agree.
Right. And then the other paragraph I did want to bring up, the one that begins with except, except as provided below, a request for the search of a student or a student's possessions will be directed to the principal, who shall seek the freely offered consent of the student in the inspection. One of the exemptions always to search requirements of reasonable suspicion is where there is the consent of the student. So if a student consents to turn out his pockets without reasonable suspicion or something like that, then certainly we're permitted to do so. However, that brings up the situation where if there were, for example, an anonymous tip, that may not be enough for a, for reasonable suspicion in its entirety. However, principals would be free still to ask, you know, do you mind turning out your pockets? Do you mind emptying your backpack? And of course, if a student does not wish to do so, then at that point, they don't give consent, then it can, the search can only be conducted with reasonable suspicion. And that's the same in the adult world with law enforcement as well. So we would have to, and of course, the issue is that, as it is in the adult world, that always there is a question as to whether consent is freely given or whether they're submitting to authority in giving that consent. So we would have to make that clear to students, that they're being asked, not told, that they, you know, that they're going to empty their backpack or turn out their pockets or whatever the case may be, unless reasonable suspicion occurs, at which point, then we have the right to do so, absent consent. So this language, I think, should be preserved unless anybody on the Board has any particular further discussion to clarify.
And the word principal does mean his or her designee, correct?
Yes, throughout.
In the definitions, it does not. It does?
Yes, throughout, it would.
Okay, good.
So that would include, and it would have to be a designee, you know, for a specific purpose. Every, everyone under the principal's chain of command is not necessarily a designee, just as everyone under the Superintendent's chain of command is not necessarily her designee.
Right.
It does require that the designation be relatively specific for the task at hand.
Sure.
I have one question before we move forward. Is this going to change what has been happening, like, in the past, so moving forward, is it going to look different? So if there is, maybe there's some suspicion that a student has something in their backpack that they shouldn't, but they don't have proof and it's, who knows? Will this hinder the principal from being able to follow through with what, you know, may be suspicious in the backpack, whatever? That's what I'm wondering about, because.
Right.
Is, is it going to change that or no?
It should not.
Okay.
And what it should do is ensure that we are in compliance with what the Supreme Court of Florida and the US Supreme Court have always said regarding student searches, which is that students don't leave their constitutional rights at the schoolhouse door, and that they do still have some protections against unreasonable search and seizure. So we would need, the biggest thing that, I don't think this changes anything we're doing, except to indicate that we are going to need to be able to articulate reasonable suspicion, which we should have been able to do all along, if we are actively searching a student's possessions, or we have to document that we have that student's consent, you know, the student agreed to empty their backpack. Otherwise, if there was just a anonymous tip, for example, that may or may not rise to the level of reasonable suspicion, it may be enough to sequester the student and further involve law enforcement, depending upon the type of, of tip that it was. But that way, we are, we're ensuring that students, just based on arbitrary reasons, aren't being subject to a particularly, or a potentially invasive search. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't keep us from being able to detect or to, to further research whether there is a violation or a possession of some item which may be dangerous to the health and safety of students. If we, if that came to our knowledge, for example, let's say a weapon or something like that, if it came to our knowledge, at that point, of course, the student may be brought into, you know, the principal's office. The backpack may be isolated from the student. Then the student would be, you know, asked about the situation. That, all of that discussion with the student, the discussion with any reporting party, that all, those all are concepts which can lead to acquiring reasonable suspicion. At that point, if a student consents to empty a backpack or to take off their shoes or turn out their pockets, that's enough in its own. If the student still does not, then at that point, we may have reasonable suspicion based on data collected so far, to go forward. And if we still do not, that doesn't mean we have to send the student back to class. That means that it can then be, because it is a health, a safety issue, can then be referred to law enforcement for further investigation while the student remains separated from the belongings or.
Okay.
Any items that they may have.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that.
I made one change. I think that should have been accepted.
Mr. Brown? Oh, yes, and we did make one alteration, except as provided above, so, because we cut and pasted some things, it's no longer below, it's now above.
Board Member Brown?
Thank you. Would you take that to the level of threat that we had put in, beyond the suspicion issue, obvious threat to the student or others, in terms of answering Ms. King's questions? Take it to that level?
Sure. Let me take a, let me take an approach as to two different scenarios. One would be that for safety purposes, we wish to ensure that no student is bringing a weapon to school. If we are doing some sort of blanket, you know, every twentieth student goes through a metal detector or something like that, the search must be kept to be extremely minimally invasive. So for example, the canine sniff, or for example, the, you know, passing through a metal detector or something like that in a random fashion. Once we are dealing with searches of a student's person or a student's belongings, then that requires a higher level of scrutiny, requires for us to, to look in, and I'd be happy to assist with any training that we need regarding searches and seizures in general, but the policy should ideally spell out, and I think it does, what we're, what we're dealing with with reasonable suspicion. Now, if it does become where there was a report, a specific report, of a, of a weapon possessed by a particular student, then at that point, we would go through the process that I just outlined, in which a, we would, there would be an escalating series of steps, you know, the student would be isolated to the principal's office, they're, under no circumstances would we say, well, we looked into it and there's nothing we can do, but we had a report that there was a very dangerous weapon, the student had a very dangerous weapon, okay, go back to class with your backpack intact and no one's looked at.
Or we observed, for example.
Right. So what would happen is the person who was reporting it, we'd need to make an assessment of credibility. The person who, the student, when we talk to the student, we need to make an assessment of what's going on there. We could go through the level of asking for consent for the student to reassure us and empty the backpack or things like that. If all of that failed, at that point, if we have developed reasonable suspicion, we may still then search a backpack, for example, or ask student to turn out pockets or take off shoes, whatever the case may be. Then, if we have not gotten reasonable suspicion, but, as, you know, as a legal term, reasonable suspicion, but we still, something's uncomfortable about that scenario, at that point, you know, law enforcement could certainly be asked to, to look into it further, to see whether they're, they have reasonable suspicion based on factors that we may not know. So.
My, my question here, Attorney Powers, would be, are we asking staff, or are we putting it in staff's hands to determine reasonable suspicion?
Initially, yes. Initially, we'd be putting in staff's hands to determine reasonable suspicion if we wish to conduct a search. Now, if, and that's not a comfortable position for law enforcement officers to be in, nor is it a comfortable position for individual staff to be in. However, if we wish to conduct a search, nobody really particularly wants to have to conduct a search. If we want to be able to do one and do it and make it legally defensible, then we have to be able to document that we had something, because it will be questioned later.
Correct.
Whether or not there was reasonable suspicion to go forward for a search, and if we did not have reasonable suspicion, you know, if there was a completely arbitrary situation where we said, you know, this, this student, we just got an anonymous tip, and therefore we brought this student in and the student was, had all of his, we went through all of his belongings and patted him down and everything else, the anonymous tip alone and by itself may not be enough to warrant reasonable suspicion.
Right.
So there's a little bit of an analysis that has to be done there. I think that because the student is not subject to arrest and things like that, it does matter to some degree, but we still have to not act, the terms are arbitrarily and capriciously, to simply, you know, for example, we just say, you know, every fifth student off of, the getting off of a bus, we're going to search your backpack.
Right.
That was a person, that's personal belongings and it's an invasive search because it's, because it's personal belongings, and therefore, we would have to have reasonable suspicion to do it, just as a law enforcement officer can't decide that every fifth vehicle they pull over, they're going to search the vehicle. They have to have some reasonable suspicion or consent in order to search the vehicle. So yes, it does require some analysis by staff if we wish to conduct a search. If we aren't intending to conduct a search, or if we are, through our, you know, investigation there, we determine that, that, that there's nothing to it and it doesn't warrant one, then that's also a decision which we can freely make. I don't know, I hope that answers what's the question, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it did. And also, as I keep reading this, this policy, and I'm hoping the other Board members will see what I'm looking at, too. This is saying that this is our search and seizure policy. However, all I see in this policy is about searches, I don't see anything about seizure.
Right. These terms are generally used in conjunction with one another whenever there's a search, because inherently, when you are, when you are even temporarily depriving someone of something that they possess, it is technically a seizure. And so, for example, if a student's backpack was searched and something was found which was, you know, a forbidden item, then we would hold on to that item. That would be a seizure.
Correct.
It doesn't mean that we're doing much more with it beyond that. But it would also apply in cases where there was not necessarily a health or safety search, but for, you know, because of an immediate threat. But for example, the student smelled of.
Correct.
Drugs or alcohol or something like that. In that case, the smell alone could be enough for reasonable suspicion to conduct a further search, at which point, if alcohol or, you know, vape pen or something were discovered or drugs, then, then we would, we would seize those for law enforcement, or, you know, and turn them over to law enforcement.
And then the other thing, as I stated yesterday, my concern, another concern I have with this is the search and seizure of cellphone, things on that.
Yes, and, and I will tell you, there's an entire area, and I think you're probably asking, you already know this, having law enforcement background there, but if we, if, if there's an allegation that a, something illicit is possessed on a cellphone, the cellphone itself may be subject to ser, to seizure, because we're going to hold on to it until we have more information, how, and so that evidence can't be destroyed or something like that. However, to actually search and go through that item, that may require a warrant.
Correct.
And that may require much more, I mean, we, we may not be able to, without the student's consent, simply flip through, you know, the contents of what's on a phone, depends on the situation. It is a fact-specific determination.
Correct.
But students would, overall, just as we do in our normal lives, have a reasonable expectation of privacy in their personal items that might be on a cellphone. We couldn't just randomly demand that, you know, everybody open your photos in your cellphone and show us what you've got.
Correct.
If there is reasonable suspicion, then at that point, when it comes into looking at contents of an electronic device or something like that, it's really quite the same as, you know, contents of if there were a diary or a journal or something like that, in order to be able to read what's written therein, we have to have some reason to do it.
Right.
And we need to be aware that there could be scenarios in which anything that is. And we need to be aware that there could be scenarios in which anything that is found as a result of what we search.
A legal search.
If we haven't done it properly, then that can't be used in, in any prosecution of the item, of the, of the case later or, or anything else. So, where, where a search can be, and police can tell you this regularly, where, where consent can be obtained, that's always the better route to go. Where a student is asked, you know, and, and has the opportunity to, to accept or reject, you know, yes, I don't mind showing you, then.
And my concern with that, because this happened several times since I've been on the board, where something has happened and the phone has been confiscated, and unlock your phone so I can look through it. And in the midst of going through whatever they're looking for, they see other things or anything else that leads to something else. And then I think that puts us as a district in jeopardy.
It does.
And even if the kid had did something wrong, you just kind of watched it because you did it wrong. So, I want us to have our protections in place for us as staff, and as well for the students to not violate their rights. Because they, as you said, they don't leave their rights at the door of the schoolhouse. They still have their rights.
And we, we can't overemphasize the fact that this, that this, there is a training component that is necessary to this determination. It can, all of the rules and case law involving and revolving around search and seizure couldn't be encompassed in a single policy without us ending up with something that looks like our overall policy manual, manual in total.
Correct.
There's a lot of case law and interpretive law regarding searches and seizures in general, and as to schools in particular.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, and it, it very likely, we're, we're not in that business anyhow, and, and it very likely wouldn't even be possible to get into a cellphone. So, it's, it's kind of a fool's errand to think that you can get into it as a practical matter, even at the federal level. I'll just add that, and it's, it's something we probably don't even need to get, get to, except to be able to let students know that they don't leave their rights at the door.
And I could spell out nine, if we figured out what ninety percent of our most common needs for a search or seizure type situation might be, something that encompass ninety percent of those, the remaining ten percent may be fifty other things that could occur. So, there, there, it's a, it's, there, there's not an easy if this, then go to that scoring rubric that we can do to, to do that. There's some evaluation procedures.
Superintendent, any?
Just, thank you, Chair. I, I agree with the comments and the language, and I, as we spoke yesterday, I think the training is a critical piece. And I know that we've already had conversation about extending that training, so, agree with that. Thank you.
Any other board members?
So, are we good with this one?
We can move on to the next item, which would be?
Sixty-three twenty? I think this was just sixty-three twenty?
Sixty-three twenty, purchasing and contracting for commodities and contractual services. I'm gonna step away from the microphone. I'll be back in just about one moment, in one moment. Pull this up, right?
Is this the one that you showed me?
Not mistaken, the question on this one was specific to the amounts listed in the contractual services, but I'm trying to get to the page number. Page seven seventy-three in the notebook. Oh, there's a lot to check.
From, from your, the document has changed.
Oh, okay.
They went back to, to what Neola provided and incorporated the specific language that we're providing into this agreement. So, where it is, and money is what we pulled from existing policy and to Neola's work. And the, they did, at a past meeting, the board voted to, with the chair signing, and so that was verified.
Okay, so what's on your screen is different than what we have here?
Yes, it is.
So, can you go back to the top, Terry, so we can just take a look?
Start with the definitions.
And this is largely statutorily driven.
Right.
But, you know, we're required, of course, to have a, a policy on it. And Neola has a model policy, which we have incorporated into the items that we specifically want to have within our purchasing policy, including, as she mentioned, the edits that the board had wanted regarding threshold amounts, so.
So, all of these definitions that are attached are basically the same definition that we use in throughout policy and statutorily?
They should be, yes. This is one that, that my office kind of vetted extensively along with the Director of Purchasing.
That'll be in multiple locations?
If the, if any definition in here differs from its common meaning in another section, it's specific as to this, that, that's why it's reiterated again in this policy. So, you know, for example, there may be another policy that's not speaking of purchasing that talks about what a proposal is, but for the purposes of po, of purchasing, that's the one that statutorily we need to use. And so, it's used here as it would be via statute.
And does the system go through and correct grammar and all that stuff like that, or?
Do we have an error?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm just looking. Development and adherence to specifications.
Where are you?
Um, under G.
Under G.
Go up a little bit more.
Development of and adherence to specifications, is that the way you want that written, I guess? I mean, I understand how, scroll down. You're, you were on the.
You got.
Scroll down from G.
It's the heading. Development of and adherence to.
Yes, I would.
Keep it that way?
Yes.
And that's fine. It's just odd the way, with having a capital A there, and I understand why, but it's just, it looks odd.
Scroll up just a little bit more.
Bring that.
I'm sorry, other direction. So, pre-purchasing review of available purchasing agreements and state term contracts. What's, tell me what that is.
State term contracts are actually listed on the state of Florida's website.
I can't hear you.
Let's make sure.
Purchasing uses those.
Can I hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. The state, we're asking for the definition of state term contracts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what she's indicating was these were, these are items that purchasing uses, those state term contracts are specified within statute.
Okay.
So.
Should state and term be hyphenated?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So, if that's a certain type of contract.
Right.
Yes.
Scroll down a little bit more. Hold, 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 hold.
Excuse me.
I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, state term, should T in state term be?
You say it again?
I do.
Oh, yeah, second line, second paragraph.
If, if it's a title.
If it's a title, it should be.
Capitalize the T.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
In that paragraph and then paragraph below it.
Right below it, yeah. Thank you. I lost it on here. I was looking right at it. Contracts.
Contracts also, in both places. Let's capitalize the C.
Right now. Thank you.
Is this our current policy?
The language in green is what was pulled from current policy.
It moved into the Neola policy.
Okay.
I didn't have anything else with that one.
And Neola is statutorily driven?
Right. And the only thing we had changed previously was the, the actual amount.
Correct.
So, yeah, we can move, I'm fine with moving on if you're fine with moving on.
You guys good with this one? We're good. It can be cleaned or whatever you need to call it. Get away from us. I'm sorry, Superintendent, do you have any?
No, I'm, thank you.
Okay.
We'll move on to P O six four two four, purchasing cards.
Page eight fourteen in our notebooks.
This is, this is strictly Neola's, or is this ours?
The genesis of this one was Neola's, right. Neola. Now, as a background, and I'll let, if anyone else wants to chime in on this, with purchasing cards, purchasing cards are intended to be used for purchases that require immediate approval or immediate invoicing. They are not supposed to be a substitute for going through a normal invoicing process. And, for example, if I have a purchasing card and I wish to schedule a conference and I need a credit card to do so, rather than sending a check to the hotel in advance, which they may not even require, or they may not even accept, they need to have a card on file, then I, that might be something that a purchasing card is used for. And throughout, and this is a, an, an, an ongoing thing procedurally that we have to deal with, those purchasing cards and people who use them, we have to be very circumspect about how they're used. And there is a, there are processes in place, and should remain processes in place and always be reinforced, that limit the use of purchasing cards to only what their intended use is. Because we could run into, and occasionally, these items raise their head, situations in which, in order to make it more convenient or get around the normal process of having to do a purchasing order and request, it's just put on the P card, the purchasing card, and then the purchase goes through. And then sometimes that means that the right departments don't know how much is being spent on a particular item. Or, for example, where we have a contract with someone, we, it becomes difficult for us to track how much money has been spent with that particular vendor over a period of time. And so, this is an ongoing process, both policy-wise and procedurally, to ensure that purchasing cards are used appropriately for anyone who has them. We do have, in order to obtain a purchasing card, staff that obtain the purchasing card are supposed to have, training or sign-off that they indicate that they are aware of what those procedures are. But that's something that's, requires ongoing, ongoing enforcement, and I'm not sure that's really built into this, in, into this policy, with the exception of the final paragraph there that says, "The Director of Finance shall conduct independent regular reviews of each cardholder's activity." But sometimes that occurs, you know, of course, by its very nature, later down the line, as opposed to on an immediate, pre-approval sort of basis. So, I know that, I know that our finance department and other departments have to work a lot on making sure these are done properly.
Chair, if I may?
This is a big deal right here, these P cards. Is there, is there anything that else that we could put in there to protect our district? Like, I mean, I, I guess it could be procedural-wise or whatever, but I personally would like somewhere in there it to be listed, because if you get a P card, everyone gets a P card, and we're six months a year down the line, you know, and these mistakes have been made. I don't know. I just feel, I know that's an area of concern for me, and I would just like to somehow see us protect that a little better, if there's a way for us to possibly do that.
Chair, if I may? I, I would like to make sure that the board is aware that this is audited every year as well, so it's subject to audit. So, it's not just procedural, but, but our audits are very comprehensive with regard to purchase cards.
But that's what my concern is, like, what, if it's a year later and somebody, you know, unknowingly has been using a P card, and there's more than one employee that has done that, then that could ultimately cost the district more money. So, that's why I posed the question, is there anything else we could do with the P cards to make sure that our district is protected? Because that's, to me, I mean, I've been hearing about this one for a while. I think there's.
Independent regular reviews is, the Director of Finance is supposed to conduct that. It isn't, you're gonna wait for an audit. Hopefully, every month, those statements would come in, and somebody would be looking at them, so it wouldn't get out of control. And also, the criteria for who gets a P card.
Right, well, that's correct.
Could be in, in the administrative guidelines.
Correct. And that's where I wonder if we, as a board, need to pay attention on who is receiving the P cards. Because I'm not sure, at this point, that that necessarily has some boundaries, or, I mean, maybe things have changed, but Dr. Gollit, I know he might have some.
So, currently, let me ask a question. I'm sure there's a listing of who, at particular places, the departments have a P card. But how far down does it go? How far up does it go? Who at, who, who's responsible at the school, let me say, school level, who's responsible at the school level for watching that? Is it the bookkeeper? Is it the principal? Who, I, I don't know the process, that's why I'm.
And then who watches the watcher?
Right. And so, I'm legitimately asking a question that I don't know the answer to.
Yeah. So, if I may, Chair, the, the simple answer is the supervisor is always the person responsible. But Ms. Boston Ellis is listening, and she's reminding me that we, there is a thorough review every month, subject to making sure those procedures are followed, because those are employment requirements, subject to firing, if dismissal, if somebody has violated P card. So, I just want to share that to you, Ms. King, so that you have information on that. It's limited to, at the school level, it's limited to the, to the principal, and typically, the, the administrative assistant or the secretary. But not everyone has a P card, and finance oversees that. Is there a limit on a P card? Like, when is there? There are limits on P cards. We can. Okay. And then it's added, okay. Yes. I just know that that's kind of been a source of contention. I hear about it periodically, that it may be used inappropriately. And so, I just, to me, that just seems like.
And often, when used inappropriately, and I, I don't want to, I want to be careful not to speak outside the scope of what my knowledge is on P card use, because that's really a finance question. But I can, I can relate that the inappropriate use often is not fraudulent, but it is well-intentioned, though it is not in keeping with procedure, and it's something that finance has to work hard to catch. For example, paying for an item that. that finance has to work hard to catch. For example, paying for an item that, from a vendor, that if it were brought into, if it were brought through a regular vendor application or through a contract, it requires a data-share agreement. But by just paying with a, with a P card for something as a product, then there's, there's an acceptance of terms and conditions when you pay. And, uh, you know, use for, it's, they're frequently used for training, and then also, sometimes vendors are charging excess fees beyond what they are permitted under statute for us to pay for. So those things aren't always caught, and it would be difficult, actually, even to catch them in the audit, because you'd have to look at exactly what it was spent on and whether, as part of that agreement, there was a portion of that that went to pay, a percentage fee that is not authorized by statute or something like that. So it does create a lot of work for our finance folks to go back and have to track what each use is used for.
Right, and that's why I think I've heard in the past, when there's numerous P cards out there, and maybe inappropriately, was not the right word, but money is being spent on these P cards, and it may not ever be caught, or if it is, it may be farther down the road, costing us more dis, more money. And that's why I wonder if we need to maybe look at that a little better, maybe even talk to Teresa, get her thoughts. I mean, she may be okay with it, this just caught my eye, and, but that might be something that we might want to look at, just to save our district money. I mean, that's my thoughts, I may be completely wrong, I just know that the P cards, I've heard many things about that throughout the years.
Yeah, I, I, Ms. King, I agree with you, oversight is always good, to make sure that we're not getting too far away from anything happening, so I understand. I understand your concerns legitimately. Yes, ma'am, Mr. Brown?
Yes, definitely, and, and I feel like they've, those procedures have been tightened up over the years. I, just, me, I haven't recently been informed of anything, but that doesn't mean that it can't still happen. And I think it's great that as board members, we don't have P cards. You know, we're very fortunate that our board services folks make those hotel arrangements for us, and really help walk us through the reimbursement process when we use our own money, so that everything is tracked and everything is transparent. So, thank you, Ms. Pressutino, and please thank your counterpart as well.
And I will note also, that the very last sentence in this is, speaks to something that we addressed in one of our previous policies, and that's that the purchasing card may never be used for personal items or services, nor is the personal gain of credit card rewards, such as bonus points, frequent flyer miles, or any other affinity program award permitted under any circumstances.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, yes, I would just, I, I wanted to concur, support, uh, or member King's comments. I, I agree with him.
Thank you. So we good? Or is there something more specific stringent, Ms. King, that you want to see?
No, I just put my, um, input on that and my concerns, you know.
Yes, ma'am. Rightfully, rightfully so.
I'm having trouble seeing what you just read, Attorney Power.
Uh, it's the last paragraph, oh, sorry, we just moved it, we moved it, one moment.
Page eight fourteen, it's the last sentence.
"The purchasing card may never be used for personal items or services, nor is the personal gain of credit card rewards, such as bonus points, frequent flyer miles, or any other affinity program reward permitted under any circumstances."
Yes, thank you, I, I found it now, yes, I, I forgot it, thank you.
All right. We're moving forward, consultant agreement sixty-five forty? And I think we had already took care of this.
That's page eight thirty, yep, sixty-five forty.
We took out that deputy superintendent, and said superintendent or designated, and the board chairs, we just did that one.
And I think we were also just ensuring that the amounts were correct.
Chair, if I may, I have a question, actually, for Attorney Whitmer on this one. Is this a recommended policy from Neola? Our question from the team is related to this being a procedure, not a policy, so I'm curious as to if you could help us with the Neola language.
I believe in the purchasing policy, there is something about this also outside, maybe that's outside counsel, but this is generally consultants. You know, Neola has two versions of this policy, and this is largely that first version, I believe. Do you want me to see if they have procedures set up for that? Is that what the question is?
Well, it's just a question. We provided edits to Attorney Power, so the team has edited this, if the board would like this to be a policy. My question is whether Neola recommends this to currently be a policy.
Yes.
Or if it's already addressed in other policies.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You have, the edits are, have been submitted.
Okay, so this is good?
I don't know that all the edits were made on the screen as to what was submitted.
Specifically to your question, Dr. Gullett, this one is contained largely within sixty-three twenty, um, this, this policy.
Correct.
And I know that Ms. Boston Ellis had, had requested that this one was redundant and, and would ask for it to be deleted, so we need to...
That's fine, because that was a Neola, I mean, an addition by, by your staff to sixty-three twenty, rather than...
So, so we did make, we essentially put this policy, which Neola recommends, within language, which was included in sixty-three twenty, purchasing that we just went over. So, if, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, in that case, we would be, it would be acceptable to delete this policy.
Yes.
As per the request of finance.
Okay, if, if the board is comfortable with that, and just so that we have the edits that the team submitted.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's go back and look at sixty-three twenty again. I just want to make sure that it speaks to consultants. And if it's in there, I don't have a problem with there, me personally. I don't have a problem with it being deleted.
Reduce the number of policies, I'm in.
I agree.
There?
There's no specific...
All right, yeah.
I see outside counsel agreements, is that it?
Mm-hmm. Uh, we've got A, superintendent designee authority, B, outside counsel agreements, C, emergency purchases there, and the fifty thousand, less than fifty thousand dollars, includes that threshold there. I think that all of the lang, and then board approval, for expenditure funds over fifty thousand. Right.
But does it speak specifically to consultant?
Uh, yes, B.
Which one?
Item B, outside counsel, oh, I'm sorry, outside counsel agreements.
Outside counsel and consultant synonymous?
N, n, not necessarily, no.
Exactly.
What, what this has, the standalone policy has the hourly rate of, uh...
Correct.
Of a day, of the daily rate of four hundred dollars, and it, which I don't see in, in the other one, but if that's matters.
So that's, that's a portion that is not included within...
Correct.
Can we move that to, whoops, can we move that to this, so that way we eliminate sixty-five forty and just keep it all in one place?
Yes.
I would be in complete agreement of that.
Yeah.
Moving that consultant parts.
Do we want to merge that on the fly right now, and go ahead and do it?
Sure.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Can we take a five minute, five or six minute break, guys?
Yes.
And give them opportunity to try to pull it together?
Yeah, that's fine.
Will that work?
Perfect.
Move on recess for ten minutes.
I'm promising more than we can deliver. I'm promising more than we can deliver. One thing that kind of hit me while we were on break, let me bring you guys back to where we were.
Think when we were talking about the, are we through with the sixty-three twenty?
Yeah, if they revised it.
So they, they, they were going to merge everything and we're good and we're going to delete one of the sixty-five forty?
Yes, sixty-five forty is actually largely, it's contained within other policies, including sixty-three twenty, our purchasing policy. And then also as to consultancy agreements, that can be covered simply by the total amount that the superintendent and board chair can designate spending for. So there's not a, a need for this policy as it occurs elsewhere.
Okay, so we will be deleting sixty-five forty?
Yes.
Okay. Can we go back to sixty-four twenty-four?
Sixty-four twenty-four purchasing cards.
Yes, there's something in there that we just created a conflict. If I'm not mistaken. The very last.
Sentence?
Sentence of that, where it talks about the purchasing card may never be used, personal items or service, nor is it for credit card rewards such as bonus points. We talked about this bonus points thing, but we changed it.
We did, but the reason we changed it was because.
We wanted the bottle of water.
But, but it, I believe that to be different than what this is, because this is actually company credit card.
They, they purchased, they make our reservations, they do everything with the P card. So we should not be getting those rewards if, that's, that's what I was saying, we talked about that initially.
We, what we talked about, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but what we talked about was the difference in when you actually go on the travel and then the hotel is giving you that, the rental car company is giving you that, the whatever is giving you that once you actually are away. This is if the purchasing card has air miles associated with the credit card itself.
Right, we can put it here.
Is, is what, I, I think these are two separate things. I, this is credit card miles, credit card bonus points, credit card cash back, credit card, credit card. The other is the vendor where said credit card purchase has been made.
And I, I think that this may be able to be defined, because she draws an important distinction. Uh, for example, if you have a hotel room that is paid for with a P card and they have, you know, free coffee in the hotel room or something like that, that's, that's not what this is intended to, uh, to capture. And how we dealt with it in the prior policy, if I remember correctly, was that we changed the term personal gain into personal accrual, accrual. Um, because the accrual of, or building up of an account or bank of points or something like that is a little bit different than simply like the bottle of water sort of scenario.
Right.
So, um, we, we, if we were being hyper-technical about it then, uh, any, you know, the, 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 the coffee with the coffee maker in the hotel room, you didn't pay for the coffee, you paid for the hotel room or you got a bottle of water at check-in, those are things that are sort of part of that travel package that you, you did. Um, the intent of this policy throughout has been to prohibit someone utilizing.
For personal gain.
For personal gain to have.
That's why I'm saying it's a conflict right now, we need to straighten it so it's not a conflict.
Well, the, the diff, again, I'm going to see a difference and, and maybe I'm wrong on this, so please correct me. But the difference I'm going to see is we have one person making the purchases for five people, just in one example.
Correct.
One person making all of these purchases. And the purpose of this statement here is so that one person with their name on that card is not collecting bonus points personally for them, for every single purchase they make for an entire department. And I, I've seen that happen before in the private world, it's not ethical, I mean, but I've, I've seen it happen, where one person is the purchaser. And so because that person actually gets to make those purchases, decide they collect all the points.
And then they get their buddies to give them cash or whatever.
Right, absolutely, and so that's the purpose of having this here. I still see a distinction from what we said before, because perhaps the difference in this is if we have ten of our staff members going to a professional development training that requires overnight stay, one person just booked ten hotel rooms, and that one person could have collected it on that credit card. But each one of those individual people then goes to said hotel room, that said hotel room says, oh, sign up for our bonus points, which we're not doing, I think, because we talked about that. But, but if you are a member already of the club of whatever the hotel happens to be, then because you're that member, you get bottles of water tonight, or you get this service because you're already a member and you just happen to be also attending a hotel. Um, that has, I, I see the distinction between the two, but maybe I'm wrong on that.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, I, I absolutely concur with that distinction. Uh, it is not possible in my life to, to keep track of free donuts or free points or free anything that comes as a merchandising method, uh, via independent companies. That I might be an airline, uh, moving me to first class, whatever. So, I thought we had resolved that, uh, and I would be very, very happy to just eliminate the cost, because it's very complicated and I, I, I don't, I don't think anybody is going to chase around trying to keep track of these trivial little items, uh, that would be foisted on you by a, by a private company.
Oh, so you're willing to pay for all of our travel?
No, I'll pay for mine though. I'll be glad to pay for mine.
For everybody's travel?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be glad to pay for mine.
We were going to pass that real fast.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and I, I might even be, I might even be moved into that, uh, if it cleared it up for me. Because it, it is so important that things not go awry. Uh, when we live in a world where free, um, for example, free.
It ain't free.
Uh, auto rental, you know, I, very, very easily, that could come, uh, and it has in the past. So, that, that type of thing, you know, I, I, I just move through the world. So, so to stop and, and begin to have an accounting of all those trivial little things that might happen uh, or be subject to a, a possible issue around that, I'd be glad to pay for my hotel. Just glad to pay for it.
And I would comment that, to the degree it matters of, as to interpretation.
Right.
This sentence says, if we just take the first part, may never be used for personal items or services, nor is the personal accrual of credit card rewards. Now then, such as bonus points, frequent flyer miles, or other affinity program reward. Um, so it's still, it's still linking it back to a credit card reward, as opposed to, you know, the fact that you may be a member of the, of Hilton honors, that you go to the Hampton Inn for whatever, for the, uh, for your personal travel. And then they look and they see that you have spent six nights with them, and so therefore you are, you know, uh, because it's linked to your name. You've spent six nights with them in the past six months and therefore, you know, next time you go, you get free turn-down service. Uh, whatever, something like that may be. I, I do think there's a little bit of a distinction, but, um, I don't think that, uh, I, I don't think that anyone could argue that that's an accrual of a credit card reward. Um, but I, that's certainly for the board to discuss how it, how they believe it impacts here. Because I know that our board is very cognizant and wanting to remain very clear and safe on the, on the correct side of, of things here, especially where you're not requesting, asking for, nor receiving any direct financial benefit, so.
And going back to policy fourteen forty, which is not what we're talking about right now, but I did pull it up, which is the job-related expenses policy, where we actually removed entirely the statement that said accrual of personal frequent flyer miles, hotel bonus points, credit card rewards, or other reward under similar affinity programs, including credit points or rewards directed to nonprofit organizations is strictly prohibited. We actually have struck that from that policy. However, I, I, and that's, I see that differently than this. Because we have had such extensive conversation, um, Miss, to Miss King's credit, about talking about P cards and the importance of ensuring that the people who have them are abiding by certain, um, ethics, whatever we want to say, and financial obligation. Because, just because we give someone the opportunity to have one, does not also afford them the opportunity to personally accept whatever that said credit card reward might be.
And that's them, not the holder of that card, not the traveler.
Correct.
That's, that's my distinction. Now, I'm, I'm just.
Because we don't ever have the credit card.
Hammer it out, I.
I, I, listen, I, I'm not, I'm not kicking what you're saying, and I agree with it to a certain point. You're talking, and I think we keep confusing it in a sense to saying what we do as a board. But there are other people out there that have P cards, that could actually be using that P card, that have the authority to travel under that P card, that could also be getting gains, personal gains, using that P card. First instance, a principal who has, she just said, a principal could have the P card and could be traveling and could still be getting the accruing those under his name or her name.
It could be, could be.
Now, I'm not talking about, ours, our travel is different, because someone else does it, so we're not accruing it. Individually, we're not accruing it, but there is a potential, I, I hope you're understanding what I'm saying.
No, I completely understand what you're saying. But I think we still leave it in. I, I mean, I.
I'm not saying take it out, I'm saying let's be crystal clear with what we're saying, and so we're not conflicting here with anywhere else.
So perhaps it needs to be a, I'm sorry, did I interrupt something?
Yeah, Mr. Rob.
No. I just have a question on the, on the P cards themselves.
Yes.
Do the P cards that are used and distributed carry the ability to accrue bonus points and all that stuff?
Perhaps it needs to be a procedure that we don't do.
Nicole, can you give us some insight on this? Yeah, pull it down.
Since I do use the P card to make the purchases for your rooms, we are not linked to any rewards members. However, when I get the statement after you have stayed, if you have, if someone has personally given them their own mile rewards or their own, um, rewards number, because those are entirely separate from our P card, then it does show, when I process that for approval through the Skyward system, it shows someone used their rewards to gain the points for personal gain.
Correct.
Okay.
And that may not always be something that a person has sought to have happen. It may be that because you are, for example, in the case of travel, a member of Hilton Rewards, they look up your Hilton Rewards number and they, they put that on your invoice.
Because we also give a personal credit card that they also would know.
For our incidentals and all that.
For incidentals.
That's right.
So they, while it may be assumed that the number was given, it may not necessarily be completely accurate.
Correct, and, and the reason I know this is because the very first trip I took as a board member, my, my rewards number came up. So when it came back to the office, and when it came back to the office, it's like, hey, you can't take these rewards. I was like, I didn't, you know, it came up.
Right.
So we corrected it, but I wanted to be crystal clear that there's no personal gain from these things. Because how we got it written right now, it says, you know.
On the P card, so perhaps, I don't know if this is policy or procedure, but perhaps we have as a district policy or procedure that says any credit card that we use will not have, you know, we use a credit card that doesn't have the ability to accrue something, I mean, there certainly are credit cards that don't have rewards associated with them. And if we just ensure that all of our P cards don't have rewards associated, then that eliminates, I mean, it, we probably still need to have this statement, but that eliminates the potential for that to occur.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and, uh, and this is very, very real, if you do any international travel, uh, kick into VIP status, you just don't have control over that. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's just very straightforward, you do not have control over that. And to, uh, whether it's this board or other employees, uh, uh, I, I, I'm just telling you that, that, uh, this seems to be so trivial and so unmanageable uh, that I would like to see it cleared out. And it, it, it sort of goes into the, this thought of, of, of like playing, playing sports. Is that a benefit? It, you know, like, benefits are going to be around all the time if they turn the heat up for you. If they do, they move you to first class, whatever. And so with those things going on, they cannot really truly be tracked. However, they could infringe on a reputation, they could create complaint, and that is absolutely inappropriate. Uh, so, and, and again, I don't know if I'm making this distinction properly, but it's, it's in the purview of a private company that you may or may not, they may be soliciting your goodwill, so, and, and any employee, not just a board member, any employee. So if we make the distinction, I'm comfortable with it to the card, then okay, fine. Because we understand what we're doing there and we can shut it off when it comes. But, uh, for this board member to, to potentially set up a, uh, say, a, an employee that's going off to a conference or something, and gets moved into some status, they almost have to follow that. And whether they benefit or don't benefit, you know, by changing the temperature in the cabin, uh, it's, uh, it's immaterial. And I don't think we should ever s- subject an employee to a potential, uh, embarrassment or problem, uh, reputational problem over this.
I agree, Mr. Rob.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with that.
I mean, I feel very strongly about that.
I understand what you're saying. I, I, I believe in being transparent with things.
I believe in being transparent too, and that's the, that's the, the substance of my comment, that we must, in, in, in the, in, we have to be thorough, but we also have to be fair. And we cannot have these things, because you've, you've always got saints and sinners. You make a, you, you come into a public arena.
Preacher to the choir, no?
Yeah, and, and suddenly, suddenly, your, you know, half of the population thinks that you're the greatest around. The other half thinks you're, think you're terrible. Now, those terribles find a policy like this and find out that you were in first class, uh, and, and yes, you do a lot of international travel or whatever, uh, you, you are vulnerable. So, it, we need to be careful about this, and this is a very real situation, somebody like the superintendent travels, uh, significant travel. And, uh, whether or not it's VIP status, you automatically go into that, and that is a benefit, I think. So, I think that's a, is cru- crucial, uh, critical.
I just want to make sure the language is correct.
Well, I, I want to make sure the policy is correct. I thought we had it solved, but apparently not. I thought we had it solved at the previous meeting.
Well, I, I think we had it solved, what we thought was the rec- the recipient of the travel or the, the person actually taking the, we hadn't resolved this.
Yeah, you got to this point.
Um, because this is actually, again, you may have someone who never actually ever goes on travel, but is booking travel for hundreds of employees, and I don't know if that's the case, but perhaps, hundreds of employees. And if that person using their personal, or their purchasing card associated with their name is accruing all of those benefits personally, I think that's what this statement.
And I get that, and I agree with that, that, that the whole, the, the clerk associated with the card, yes, I get that. But not all employees, not a principal, for example.
Superintendent, you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I have confirmed, as we talked about before, Ms. Boston Ellis has confirmed that the P card itself does not accrue anything, but the person making that possibly could, we'd have to spend some time researching how that might happen.
And that being the case, I would suggest that regardless of what we say or do in this policy, how any such accrued reward of that type that we're talking about is gained or used, may always be a violation of the code of ethics. And that's independent of anything we say or do in this policy. And so perhaps, rather than having this language of the last paragraph in policy, it may be wise for us to say something like, employees are cautioned that the personal accrual or use of any linked rewards may be a violation of the code of ethics, or may lead to-
I like that.
...a code of ethics violation. That way-
I can go with that.
It's nothing that we are saying here by putting it in here, because we can't-
Right.
Those things can't be accrued to the P card, if this section is about P cards.
Right.
Therefore, if it is indeed a violation of code of ethics, we're not speaking to that here.
Right. You're saying that it could be.
It could be, and so employees are cautioned.
May lead to, I like that.
Yes, I like that.
And it refers them to do their research and/or, you know, exercise their own caution.
I, I like that statement, because it puts it back on the-
Right.
-traveler.
Yes.
I don't have an issue with that.
Yes.
That makes more sense to me, and that should take us kinda out of conflict-
I agree.
-with what we had already said that we were gonna do.
So, does that statement need to be added to policy fourteen forty then?
Yes.
On job related expenses?
I think so, do I have four?
Yes, you do. You have it anyway.
Pardon me?
You got it, go ahead.
Yes, thank, thank you, I, I, I just wanna, I wanna be in order. I like that, cause quite often, over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years, I can't remember ever turning in mileage, so, for whatever board, and this one included, because I may make a stop along the way, and it, and it's, it's a personal stop.
Correct.
For, for example, Gaston County, I have some issues up there that we do, and it's just separate and apart from this school district. I will not turn things in, but if I'm there, I'll make a diversion. So, the, the entire trip would have to be made to get to the sheriff's, say, in Gaston County. And so I, I just avoid the whole thing. And so this would allow that to take place for, for, for school principal, for example. Excellent, thank you.
If you wanna check the language of that sentence and determine whether specifically I've outlined what the linked rewards are, or whether less is more-
Right, linked rewards needs a comma after it.
Well, I've, I've deleted that section, uh, that entire sentence and put this new sentence here. Employees are cautioned that the personal accrual or use of any linked rewards, comma, bonus points, comma, frequent flyer miles, comma, or any other affinity program awards may lead to a violation of the code of ethics.
While on school district travel, right?
Well, it's not just travel, though, it is also-
Well, you know, you know what I mean, school board business.
Which is, if they're using a P card, it's school board business.
Right, this is a P card policy.
Okay.
And it may be.
Yeah.
And when you're saying maybe, then anything may be-
So you're just, you're saying it's implied that it's school board business? So it's implied, that's what you're saying?
Because this is the P card policy.
Because it's a P card.
Yeah, because of the P card, and it may be if, you know, like you may, if you're traveling to Tallahassee, you may go over the speed limit. Okay, fine, I don't have a problem with that. You may or may not, but it doesn't mean you are, nor does it mean, you know, these, these things we're discussing.
Well, I think we just established, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I think we just established that the P card doesn't have any rewards on it, so-
It, it does not. What we are indicating here is we could run into those situations in which you use a P card to secure a hotel room. That hotel room says that your name is Jeremy Powers, and that hotel room recognizes that you have used their hotels or you're a member of their other rewards program.
Yeah, I remember all that.
And so as a result, they immediately give you some credit for, this is your sixth night, so you get a night free later.
Yeah.
If I do that and I accept that, it's gonna be on my shoulders to tell them, don't credit me with that reward if I believe that it's gonna be a violation of the code of ethics, but that's between me and them and the code of ethics, not the school board and its policy.
And if you're even aware of that.
Right, and, and just to be ever clear, while we're at a conference or whatever, and I'm using my own personal Capital One Venture Card to buy my dinner and whatever else, incidentals, that they take your card and file for that, is it then necessary to turn off any points or rewards or anything that I would be earning during that time?
Well, that wouldn't be a P card, right?
Right.
Okay, so then that refers back to the, the other policy that we talked about.
That you can, you can earn it.
And, sorry, go ahead.
She, you would be able to earn it, because that's your personal card.
Because we were silent within that policy.
And I just wanna make sure that distinction is really clear for, for us and for everyone that may be, you know, listening in on, on this. So that leads me to my next question. If, if, and this is probably would be an ethical violation, as I'm thinking ahead before I even ask the question, and that is, is that because you like to accrue miles and because you like to be able to get a microwave without having a paper, whatever, you put it on your own card and then submit it for reimbursement. If the cost is the same, the room is a hundred bucks a night either way, but you put it on your own card, then how does that figure into all of this? I'm just trying to think of all this.
No, that's, that's beautiful.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent, because I'm, I'm in a position of just getting off a P card totally. In other words, I, there's, there's no reason to ever jeopardize yourself, nor a principal or a superintendent or anybody.
Especially with all these hyperlinked things, where you don't even know that it happened.
Exactly. It's private companies, they're third parties, they flood in all sorts of benefits, VIP status, free rental, you know, free-
Let's face it, it's nice when it happens.
-free entry into an operation in Paris. And, you know, all these things interlap, and you have no control. I would never involve that level of accounting for a hundred dollar, or a hundred, two hundred dollar room. Just forget it, you just forget it. You know, forget the travel, forget the reimbursement, forget the P card, because a principal, for example, their reputation matters far more than to be in this level of jeopardy by a third party that you may or may not be aware of.
Well, not everyone's in a position to not get reimbursed, so we have to be cognizant of that.
Thank you.
Why we need good, good material here.
Yeah.
You know, good wording.
And I would think as it applies to the code of ethics, there would not really be a realistic distinction between whether you're accruing those things by reimbursement of use of your own card, and I know there are restrictions around when and how you can use your own card and seek reimbursement as opposed to, you know, for travel and things like that. But I, as, again, linking back to the code of ethics, I don't think there would be a distinction whether you're using a P card or whether you're going through reimbursement from your regular card. It could still lead to a violate, a violation of the code of ethics if you are going beyond incidental sort of accrual of these sort of rewards programs or things like that. But that's a determination that is subject and specific to all of those requirements within the code of ethics, and we're all tasked with having knowledge of and responsibility for complying with code of ethics.
Right, so it ma- may I?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so it matters, it matters, the status, for example, of a principal flying, maybe it has an awful lot of, say, international miles, VIP status, various things can take place, in which puts in jeopardy the use of travel reimbursement. And so it may be, it may be just totally out of your control, in which case it is improper. I think we need to change the wording on even the code of ethics, so that it is, you're gonna get all kinds-
That's statute, I mean, we, the code of ethics is a, is a-
That's not within our purview to change.
That's not within our purview.
Yeah, all right, all right.
That's Florida.
I think-
Okay, so it's, so, but, but at least understand it if we're saying it here, because you have to understand it so that it is correct, and I think that's our purpose here today, is to make it correct. And not jeopardize a, a person for travel. That is, where you have benefited, uh, with, without even knowing. Let's just go down that road, VIP status.
You've benefited without knowledge or intent.
Yes, without even knowledge.
Correct.
And so you cannot go back into, it becomes an impossible task, a fool's errand, to think that you can adjust American Airlines because of your international travel and because of, you know, free VIP status at the Paris Air Show, let's just say.
And back to as it applies to this policy, that's a moot point, because of the fact that-
Right.
-as to this policy, with the P card, you're not going to be-
Excellent, then if that's clear, excellent.
Such a cruel, right?
Right, and I think it's important also, Mr. Brown, the word may. So I think may means, you know, depending, yeah, so may or may not. Now, if it said shall-
Right.
I think that's more like, you know, get them, so I think may, and it does need to be on there, cause I do think there's, you know, people can unintentionally fall into who knows whatever, you know, so just may, but it's probably important and good to have that there, so if they're going through it, it, they're like, oh, so they, it kinda teaches them or, you know-
May is a warning.
-let them understand that there is something, a warning, yes, you know.
I don't wanna start a cruel Ponzi scheme.
Yeah, and if somebody did know, you know, and they'd been told or something, and they still do it, there's intent, so I just think, I think may's a good word.
For the purpose of this policy-
Yes.
I would recommend we change the word employees to cardholders.
Oh, I like that.
Because throughout this policy, this references-
Says cardholders.
Cardholders must use common sense.
Yes.
Cardholders will immediately, and so that offers that distinction-
Yes.
-to, this is specific to P cardholders.
Excellent.
I, I, I agree.
Do we agree with that?
Excellent, I agree.
Now, should we choose to make that same statement elsewhere, then we can change it to employees, but because this is a P card-
Driven policy.
Driven policy.
I, I, I can go with that.
I do know that.
I think we also need to state it somewhere else saying, employees as well.
That's fine.
So that we're kinda consistent across the board.
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Do we want to bring back up that other policy and make the edit in that policy?
It's fourteen forty.
Is that something we can do?
And, and it may be elsewhere, but that's the one, the job related expenses is the one we definitely should.
And pretty much having that same statement-
Yes.
Adding it to that other policy.
All right, let's, as soon as we save this, let's pull that up and we'll wordsmith that as well.
Yeah.
There's no way you could know, you've got VIP status.
Good job, Terry, that is precisely how I would have done that.
Too bad the district doesn't have a card yet.
I know.
Four percent cash back, they just go back into the regular fund, I mean, you know, like buying power.
There's probably some statute that prevents that. Probably some statute that prevents that.
You know, why would that be on that account?
It's part of what you're paying for.
Yeah, that's just being smart, finance.
Yep. Bringing in and use it, use it within the system, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, we should be able to get some, some credit for schools.
Yes, it's a value add of things.
To buy, to buy books or to buy-
Yeah, pay, pay bus drivers, exactly.
Equipment, yeah, that would be wonderful.
Free travel, absolutely.
The card just for education.
So it'll go in place of that statement we removed.
That's perfect. Student travel or something, use it for all sorts of benefits, I mean, it could, it could end up being very significant.
Yes.
They might could take free field trips.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly.
Traveling is very important for kids to do.
Exactly.
Could you imagine a card for bands or football teams, and how much that could-
Generate.
Could generate for the, yes, absolutely.
I guess booster clubs could have their cards, cause they would be independent, nonprofit, they, they might be doin', I don't know, they might be doing that.
Is there a way to look into that, Dr. Goett?
Absolutely.
One more thing to put on your plate.
I certainly will, absolutely.
Oh, that's, that's huge, it's revenue.
It's our students, absolutely.
Yeah, don't leave the money on the table.
Mm-hmm, like, free microwave for the institute.
There you go.
I mean, bang, just case closed.
It's a long walk to the coffee bar.
That's what we're talking about.
It is, isn't it?
Look what we got with our cash back, we have a coffee bar.
I just want, guys, I, I wasn't trying to be kind.
No, you brought up a great point and look what happened.
Excellent, excellent, perfect discussion.
We're clear.
I just don't wanna get involved.
And, and you don't wanna put a, you don't wanna put a, a principal or a, or an athletic coach, for example, in jeopardy, ever, ever.
Not for something.
Or leave money on the table, ever.
Yeah, too bad all that bid stuff is statute driven, doesn't leave a lot of room for negotiations.
Because that's in administration, and she's put in administrative staff member, should we just make it-
Put administrative staff.
Cause it's administrative staff, so do I need to look at such policies? We don't-
Yeah, keep that brain working, I, we need the Campbell brain on this.
Twenty, I'm gonna look and see.
Employee is reimbursed.
Okay, so, what did you say? They're cross referencing, I'm just checking, make sure there's not-
Remember in the old days, we, people would pay their mortgages through credit cards, they used to allow that.
Yeah, employees, that's, that's what I was looking, cause this one isn't cross referenced anywhere else, I think that's what, I think Mr. Brown's working on it, that's what I was looking for.
That was in the day of, everybody should have a credit card, nobody should have a machine, before you knew it, they're like charging over the house, losing their houses left and right, but I wish they could balance that somehow with more stricter requirements, where you still could get some benefits, you know, you pay your card every month and you know.
Yeah.
Yep, yes, it is cross referenced.
I have one great card. I keep my debit card with me just in case, but, and even my debit card, it's through USA.
It's the source of the reward.
So they, um-
Yep.
If I have to go to the cash machine or something, up to fifteen bucks a month, they reimburse the fee.
After rewards. I'll request input from the board. We have, as we're wordsmithing this sentence here, employees are cautioned that the personal accrual or use of any linked rewards, bonus points, frequent flyer miles, or other affinity program rewards may lead to a violation of the code of ethics. After, after affinity program rewards, do we want to add something that says, for example, in connection with, in connection with school reimbursed or board reimbursed expenses? So that it's clear that we're talking about not just in our general lives, but as to what we're talking about here is, if they're, if you're being reimbursed for it, for, for whether this, this travel and other expenses, if you're being reimbursed for that, then that's where it could potentially run afoul of the code of ethics, as opposed to if it's something that you're not being reimbursed for.
Oh, geez. And is that gonna be district related expenses or board related expenses?
District related, right.
Okay.
This is too small for me to see from this distance, I'm gonna have to come over.
Right, dis- district reimbursed related expenses.
Right, I do that all the time.
So, uh, as we have it now, employees are cautioned that the personal accrual- Employees are cautioned that the personal accrual or use of any linked rewards, bonus points, frequent flyer miles, or any other affinity program rewards in connection with district reimbursed related expenses may lead to a violation of the code of ethics.
I, I still think it's just district related expenses, because that can be reimbursed or otherwise.
Expenditures?
Ex- okay, she's saying eliminate the word reimbursed.
Expenditures.
Okay.
Cause I mean, district related expenditures are gonna be reimbursed or otherwise.
They may not be.
But, but I, I, this is, the intent of this is regardless of whether somebody else purchased this for you or not, regardless of whether travel was purchased on a P card that you don't have in your possession, you could still be- you could still be in violation of the Code of Ethics, potentially, so, or if you reimburse that travel to the person who paid out of pocket, you could be in violation of Code of Ethics.
But it's only the ones that are reimbursed.
Are the ones that would be in violation?
Where this would be an issue, it's not, if you, if you make a personal expenditure that's not, for some reason, is not reimbursed by the district, I don't think there's any issue at all.
No, and, understood on, on that, but the purpose of including it here is talking about job-related expenses as a, a part of your position. And so, whether the district pays for that, or whether you personally pay for that, we're just saying, be advised, it's potential that you may be in violation of the Code of Ethics if you accept it.
But it's only if, only if the district reimburses the employee for that expense.
Ms. Ohr.
Yes, and here's the confusion, I think, for the board, is that we're not holding a P card when we go to the Hyatt for our Florida School Boards Association conferences. Our hotel room and the conference fee are paid for in advance on a P card
Correct.
by one of our board clerks.
Correct.
And then when we get to the conference and we buy dinner for ourselves, or
Incidentally.
incidentals, yes, incidentals, where they take your card, put it on file, your personal card, then at the end you pay your incidentals, and then whatever incidentals are covered under reimbursement, you know, a certain amount towards food and this and that, and the rest isn't covered, then I have now used my credit card that I accumulate points on to buy my dinner, of which twenty dollars, say, is, is reimbursed and the rest isn't, but still, I'm gaining those twenty points. Because I didn't have a P card to use to the whole thing, that doesn't accumulate any benefits.
And that would be settled by eliminating reimbursed and just saying in connection with district-related expenses?
I would think so, because you're only, well, no, because I'm using my credit card for the whole total.
And she may not get reimbursed, you know, again, so that, again, or partially.
Or partially reimbursed, that's the part I'm worried about.
Yeah, may, may I interrupt, okay, and, and also, you may not know about the reimbursement until you get back, and perhaps at that point, it falls into a reimbursement status, there's no way to roll, reel this back in, your VIP status, simply because Ms. King happens to travel internationally and was upgraded, this is just an impossible situation, or the superintendent has, is at a certain level of, you just can't reel all that back in.
And I think that if we
And you may not know until later, and then there may be a reimbursement based on actions here, you know, so, I'm just, this is fraught with problems, unless it's statutorily driven and we absolutely have to have this wording, it, it just, it, it just seems like a real, real, it's fraught with problems.
So, the purpose of adding this sentence, not only to policy fourteen forty, but I just double-checked that it is cross-referenced in thirty-four forty and forty-four forty, so it'd have to be crosswalked across all of this. We had, we had wordsmithed this one to eliminate this statement previously in this policy, when we reviewed this one in December, that the accrual of all of this was strictly prohibited. Because we've just figured that in the P card language, we want to say that, rather than it being strictly prohibited, that it may lead to a violation of the Code of Ethics. I believe this statement as placed here is exactly the way we want it worded. Because we are simply saying, just check yourself, we're not saying we're strictly prohibiting you from doing it, we're not saying that it's not possible that this could happen, we're just simply saying that any job-related expense, which is this policy, which would be a district-related job expense, that employees are just cautioned, that if you
Cautioned.
Cautioned, that you need to be aware that your personal accrual of any of this may be a violation of the Code of Ethics.
And it may not be.
It may not be.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, if it would be clarifying to say, well, we could say may or may not, but the fact is, it may be a violation of the Code of Ethics, and we're, we're not making that determination within this policy.
It's not us to determine.
No.
That's still, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
That still doesn't help us when we have a form in our district that we are encouraged to use and can use and have used forever. And again, this is because back then things were, money was different, you used cash or a check, you know, you weren't accumulating points and rewards and everything that you can do now. So there is a, there is a legitimate reimbursement form, that when we come back from a conference, we get reimbursed for, for mileage, if we claim it, we get reimbursed for miles per diem, if we claim it. And so this still doesn't answer my concern about that. If, if I've used my own personal credit card on the trip and am now claiming reimbursement, even if I'm only getting partially reimbursed, say I paid fifty dollars for dinner and the limit was twenty, you see my point?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so there's, there's a gray area here now because of the way financial transactions have changed.
Yes.
Which may or may not lead to a violation.
I don't like that, though, because I don't wanna be in any gray area that may or may not lead to a violation.
You don't wanna be in that, no, no, no.
I wanna know that what I'm doing is a hundred percent legitimate when I travel.
One hundred percent, yes.
Well, then that's up to looking into the Code of Ethics and asking the Office of Ethics or whatever the call is.
Yeah, maybe we need that clarification.
Yes, maybe we need to do that.
We're at that point.
Yes.
Because otherwise, the form needs to change, and the form needs to have a, a warning on it, you see what I mean? Am I going too far with this, or is this?
No. No.
Okay.
Not going too far, you have to be a hundred percent.
You're not going too far. You're not going too far.
I wanna be able to sleep.
One hundred percent.
And I'll just share this, the only way that I've been able to, to deal with this, I just don't claim.
I don't either.
I don't claim.
And that's, but, but that's me, everyone has their own right to do whatever, but that's just how I've dealt with it, because I didn't, I didn't want to be in that gray area, I saw the gray area when I first got on the board, I said, that's an area that could easily be manipulated through public opinion or the public, and I didn't wanna be in that area, so.
And it does, it does leave the question open, however, I would also draw the analogy to, if we have a, if we have a policy on use of district vehicles for travel, or use of personal vehicles for travel, within our policy, it may spell out that, what the requirements are for its use, but it may not spell out that, you know, people are warned that if you speed, or if you commit any other traffic violation
Wow.
while in a district vehicle,
Right.
you may be subject to the traffic law reinforcement, or enforcement of the state of Florida. It's expected that people are, by operating the vehicle, are going to need to, A, they know that, and B, that, that, that we're not, we're not specifying in policy that thou shalt not speed while in a district vehicle. Or thou, we don't even say you must obey all Florida traffic laws, it's just presumed, now, likewise, I think it's, the question is, do we, do we clarify, and can the answer can go either way, do we, do we need to clarify within our policy exactly what is and is not a violation of the Code of Ethics?
Yes.
And if so, what I would suggest is that the only way for us to do that would be to have consensus to request from the Commission on Ethics, a opinion regarding the use of, of cards and expenses in the manner that we're talking about here. We'd have to narrow the question down and, and, and get a specific answer, the answer of which becomes an opinion that we can either insert in toto into the policy, which may get quite bulky, or at least clarifies it and we say, you know, guidance, for further clarification, see guidance from the Commission on Ethics. Which it might be that we wish to simply say, for further clarification of this item, we seek, seek guidance from the Commission on Ethics in the first place, I mean, that's, that's up to, up to us how we wanna proceed, but there, this is a difficult.
Can you make a distinction, please, as to your first was illegal, like speeding, and Reverend Cummings making the comment that, let's suppose he gets VIP status, and at something that is not illegal.
Sure.
So, please make that distinction, because that's the troubling part, we all know we have to follow the law.
Because we have a driver's license.
But, but being, Ms. King being a VIP is not a violation of the law, that'd be very normal.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
In, in your description about vehicles, that brings up another thing, it's a school board vehicle, and you don't, I'm, I'm driving it, I don't have a P card, and my, it's, when I got in the car, it's on empty.
Right.
So I go to the gas station, I use my venture card, fill her up, and now I've earned some rewards.
Right.
So I would like to see something in policy that says what you can do, and it sounds to me like the only way you can stay within these cautionary tales is to pay cash, get a receipt, and then get reimbursed accordingly, and not use a card at all, not use a personal credit card.
Because the prohibition is put there to avoid someone who would take those microtransactions like that, someone who knows that they drive this vehicle to Tallahassee weekly, for example, I don't think that exists, but if that were the case, and say, I'm gonna fill it up with my personal card every time I go, because I'm earning gas points, and I'm gonna get, you know, twenty cents a gallon on the gas rewards.
In which case you should have a, said employee should have a P card that doesn't generate that, or pay cash.
Right.
Or, or the district gets the credit.
Right.
As you were.
Yes, I pay you fee card rewards.
It becomes difficult to draw a distinction between a single occasional transaction which is non-violative and should be non-violative, to a pattern of conduct which is intended to create a personal benefit to the employee. And that, I think is a, it would be a factor taken into consideration as to whether or not it's a violation of the Code of Ethics. But it's not necessarily a determination that should be made by district policy to say that, for example,
Right.
you may not pay with a credit card because your credit card has rewards points in this single transaction. That's kinda beyond the scope of what we intend to do in policy, but if we wish to clarify and spell it out in policy, we would necessarily have to take on whatever the Code of, the, the, the Commission on Ethics guidance is regarding that entire scenario.
Right, to avoid any conflicts.
Now, as, remaining silent, correct.
Get a receipt.
Yeah, and all possible scams cannot go into policy, you know, I mean, that's just, that's just, that, that, by definition, we do not need to go there, I don't think, at least for this board member.
No, I don't think we can.
All possible scams, I, I say, if Reverend Cummings travels normally as VIP simply because of his status and his frequent traveling and his use of, his status in life, let's say, he does not have to roll all that back.
Well, let me give you an example. Board Member Browning, does, does the Code of, does the Commission on Ethics agree with you as to what you just stated?
I have, I have no idea.
Right, nor do I.
Yes, I have no idea, and I would assume that it does not, however, if it does, then it would need to be addressed, and I would not wanna put it here because it's sound, this, this idea of these points accruing and all these benefits that could happen to a third-party private company, could do it as part of their advertising program, I'm not responsible for that. I may or may not, ever, ever, you know, Eastern Airlines may go under, and, and I may have so many free flights that it doesn't really matter, I may never, I may never reel that in. However, I should be able to function in my normal status in life. If, if I'm a, if I'm a, a coach, for example, I'm a principal, I'm making a trip for the district, it's a duty, and I should not have to roll back my lifestyle because you get VIP status.
So I think that
Let's just say, I'm just using it as an example.
Well taken, and I think that since you have, since you brought that up, we're, I think what we're talking about here is potentially remaining silent as to it in board policy by not prohibiting or encouraging it, however, leaving that as something that we, we, we're not speaking to the Code of Ethics, now, if we want to give guidance on the Code of Ethics through our policy, we would have to then know exactly what the Commission on Ethics terms are.
That's right, C section.
And point to those, and even then, there's a factual determination of the instance we just brought up as to a single use versus a repeated pattern of use and all that stuff. And so, the question is, is that something we spell out here in policy? Do we give people adequate warning by saying, you know, that it may be a violation of the Code of Ethics? Or do we try to provide some guidance, but not all guidance as to whether it is a violation?
How about may or may not, or perhaps a reference to a, the consideration of the Code of Ethics may be appropriate, I, you know, something, some reference to it.
We could always say, instead of using a term that it's a violation, we said, you know, employees should, we could say employees should refer to
Consult.
Could consult.
Should refer to the Code of Ethics regarding that.
So, you, you, you could, and a coach, for example, would be able to travel and not have to worry about all these little mundane details, he could continue on in, in his normal life, and and a coach may be solicited by an airline for whatever, and so, if he did consult it, fine, he's good. You know, that type of thing, yes, but not imply that there's a violation. I, I, I like that.
So, attorney, would, as superintendent and attorney, do we have, we don't have that many folk that actually are traveling around the district that would be on the P card, and could this be a, a case of de minimis?
Mm-hmm, good point, excellent point.
Yeah, it very well could be, we, we have, first of all, I mean, separately with the P card.
Teachers, you have.
Teachers.
I'm sorry.
So, sorry, Chair, to your question, I mean, you have teachers, you have other staff members, various departments traveling. And to the conversation earlier, it might, somebody else is likely arranging the travel for those folks.
So is this so trivial that we've beaten it to death too much?
I think so.
And I hate to say that the next policy
I think we have a lot left on here to do, I think.
I mean, the next policy.
I'm sorry, hold on, hold on.
I think we have a lot left on here that we need to be working through.
Well, the next policy is travel in per diem, hate to tell you all.
It just keeps going, I mean, that, that's the next policy we're reviewing.
So, can we, can we move forward with this statement and say that this statement is good, but we have to carry it across some other causes?
As long, for this board member, as long as it doesn't say violation, I think if we can go into may want to consult, and then the wordsmithing, I, may want to consult.
It said may.
Stay compatible with, or something.
It says may lead to a violation.
I don't like violation.
May lead to the Code of Ethics violation?
I don't think so, I, I think you, uh, uh, the Code of Ethics
Employees are encouraged to consult, or
Perfect.
Encouraged to refer to the Code of Ethics. And personally accruing or using any
Yes, then that would jump on a scam, that would, that would address a scam.
That just changes both.
Legally, I will say there is no distinction between telling someone that it may lead to a violation of the Code of Ethics, or reminder, please consult with the Code of Ethics. Legally, there's no distinction, other than one sounds scary and one doesn't.
Okay, implication though, implication of policy.
But it, that doesn't, I mean, there's no legal con, no, no, what, how we put it in policy there, that's, the question is, do we wanna give them a reminder, that whether we're regulating it, it may be regulated by the Code of Ethics, or do we not wanna give that reminder? And, that's secondary to the question of, do we want the previous policy, as we pointed out, said is strictly prohibited, and now we're going to remain, you know, silent as to that? What do we wanna do? I think our, generally, the board has answered, yes, we wanna remain silent on it. And then the question is, if we're remaining silent on it, are we, because we don't wanna address all of these potential issues and make it a disciplinary offense if somebody runs afoul of it, we're saying it's not, it's not gonna be a disciplinary offense, because it's not our board of, it's not our, our policy, however, just because it's not within our policy, doesn't mean it's not within the purview of the Code of Ethics, so.
I'm with that, I'm good with that.
We are fine in doing it We are fine in doing it however you want to, but in general, if we are deleting the, if, if we are deleting the provision that says strictly, this is strictly prohibited, I think that a warning in there expressing to employees that, though we are not prohibiting it anymore, that we used to, that we're not prohibiting it, this may lead to a violation of the Code of Ethics, you know, if, essentially if used improperly is what the implication is.
Sure.
So, but that's, again, whether or not it is, that's a determination that is a very fact-specific. And I don't even think that the Commission on Ethics would give us a, a guidance opinion on something that is broad fact and.
Right.
I think it's unnecessary.
So you, I like, I like the word may.
And by the way, the last sentence there is probably useful. This policy does not address every issue, exception, or contingency that may arise.
That's good.
In the course of travel.
Are we, are we in agreement to move forward with that statement in the blue or green?
Read the whole statement. I, I need to, I.
Employees are ca, we've removed the language that says, "Thou shalt not," and then now we're going to, "Employees are cautioned that the personal accrual or use of any linked rewards, bonus points, frequent flyer miles, or any other affinity program awards in connection with district-related expenses may lead to a violation of the Code of Ethics."
I'm fine with it.
I am as well. And then this policy does not address every issue, exception, or contingency that may arise in the course of travel.
Right.
That helps. That helps.
And that would be crosswalked in all the 1440s.
We'll have to cross-reference as to each of them. And we'll, we're making note to make sure that that's done. As to each of those, let's see, we have the policy, you have the list of policies that are affected.
Thirty-four forty and forty-four forty.
Forty-four forty and forty-four forty.
Correct.
Superintendent, anything else you want to weigh in on that?
Thank you, Chair. This is pretty simplistic. I know it's technical, but we say Code of Ethics. It's actually called Code of Ethics for public officers and employees. Do we need to be clear in the language there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
I can live with that.
For public officers.
And employees, that's listed in statute as such. I just don't want it to be misunderstood.
That's good. If it's listed in statute.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Guys, we good? Let's move forward. Travel in per diem.
Can we just say the same thing? I don't know what we were changing.
Ditto.
Ditto. What we said.
Because these words are not, this isn't, maybe.
Let's look at it. Let's look at it.
I mean, it's under out-of-county travel, I think, is what we were changing. Item number, this is page eight thirty-one in our notebooks. It's policy sixty-five, sixty-five fifty. But it, this exact verbiage from previously is not in this policy. There's similar language, but not the exact. So I'm not certain what we had changed exactly.
Chair, can we enlarge that? Earlier, you had it larger where it was easier to read.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm not there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Can we insert the language, if you're, it does not apply unless you're working a scam, you know? It would put people on notice. Now, I'm being facetious, but.
Don't try to play us.
Yeah, don't try a scam.
Yeah, that's better. I was just.
A little too small.
I think it's number six.
Is this the same one we talked about with the, the fifth and the fifth?
So I don't see any edits in this one, but number six, scroll up just a bit, right there is what mentions incentives and rewards. So I, I can only assume that's why we brought this one up, but I don't. Did, did you guys see any other changes made to this one?
Seven's a disaster.
And, and by that, for those that, because since, i- is this also being the livestreamed, our, our feed here?
I don't think so.
Okay. I want to, I want to clarify because I did have somebody asking yesterday what we're referring to. We're referring to under B, and this is as to policy sixty-five fifty. As to B, which is out-of-county travel, and items six and seven, those are the ones we're referring to. Six states when travel is made at board expense, any incentives and rewards earned from such travel or property of the board. As soon as an employee has accrued enough mileage or credits from board travel to receive a free ticket or other reward, the employee shall report such reward earned to the superintendent or designee. Travel rewards and incentives earned after January first, nineteen ninety-six shall be used only by board member employee, board employees traveling on board business. And then seven is violation of this policy or falsification of required records shall be grounds for disciplinary action, not excluding dismissal.
See, that's how far back this goes.
See, disaster. Yeah.
Nineteen ninety-six.
This is the Marion policy, right?
We need to get out of that business.
Just FYI, this is a.
Is a statute.
This, this is.
Because it has such a specific date, it makes me think it's statute.
This policy overall largely is Niola's model policy, but this provision within that policy comes from language that we had in previous policy.
Okay.
See, a disaster. So, I say scratch it.
Just, yeah.
Ms. King? Were you about to say something? I'm trying to read your eyes. I can't.
I know. We can't see your face.
Just a little.
I'm about ready to put my mask on too, son.
Well, this is not statute, correct? This is just, so I'm okay scratching it. I, I, I can envision principals that have been here for twenty years or something not knowing, and then them hearing this discussion and thinking, oh my goodness.
Oh, my God.
You know, and I'm like, I do not think this is anything to beat up our employees over that I knowingly did this. I mean.
Agreed.
You know, and so if it's not statute, I'm okay with.
Yeah, agreed.
Let's get rid of it.
Yeah. And can't we replace it with what we just worked hard on for the last hour and a half?
I would say so.
And I don't even think that's necessary.
I agree with you.
I think we can probably.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, I just say, but that's just my.
Scratch it.
Delete six and seven?
Yes.
Six.
And seven.
And seven?
And seven.
Seven, if you take ways, if you.
Yeah, no, I think seven is still needed.
Seven needs to stay.
Well, right, seven needs to say, because by deleting six, we're no longer making the incentive and reward program part of
Right.
the required records. But essentially, we are saying now.
All, everything above that is still good.
Any other violation of any policy is always grounds for disciplinary.
Okay, that's.
They should say shall or may.
Falsification now.
You don't want to falsify your odometer reading or the meal that you had or any of those things.
Yeah.
Grounds for, so we need to.
Yes.
I went to Tallahassee when.
Shall be or may.
Yes, yep.
Say shall.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Passing off somebody else's receipt as yours.
Shall be grounds for doesn't mean it's necessary, but it will be.
I thought shall means it is.
It does, but we're, we're.
Maybe.
So that we're not talking about two different things here. On seven, violation of this policy or falsification of required records shall be grounds for disciplinary action, not excluding dismissal. So by saying it in this way, shall be grounds for, it's indicating that violation of the policy is a, is, those are grounds for disciplinary action. And the disciplinary action then is unspecified, but it is up to and including dismissal.
I'm fine with shall.
I'm fine with that.
How about maybe?
Nope.
No.
This, this is dealing with our money, guys.
Makes it a somewhat arbitrary as to whether a violation, if we agree that there's a violation of this policy,
Yeah.
then there's not a question as to whether it might or might not be grounds for disciplinary action.
You put too much discretion there and favoritism and all kinds of stuff, so.
If there's a violation.
If it's a violation, it's a violation.
Try to explain as carefully as possible for the, that we have violation of this policy, and it's talking about this entire travel in per diem policy and specifically as accounts to out-of-county travel. But violation of this policy shall be grounds for disciplinary action, not excluding dismissal. So it's not ruling out the possibility that could lead to dismissal. And it is saying it is grounds for disciplinary action. It doesn't necessarily mean that that disciplinary action needs to be anything more than a verbal warning. That is completely.
But doesn't it have to have, doesn't it have to have due process at some point? In other words, that looks like accusation, a violation, accusation shall. And I, I don't think that that's.
The disciplinary action means that they have due process in the disciplinary action.
Right.
That's, that's automatically in there.
Right.
According to due process or something, you know, maybe, maybe, because, because this looks to me like it will happen, like this is guilty.
If they are found to be violation.
If there is a violation.
Okay, oh, if you're, all right.
So violation of this policy
Violation of.
Shall be grounds for disciplinary action.
How about conviction of violation or, or finding a violation?
Violation. There, there won't be a violation unless there's been an investigation and it's deemed that it is a violation. But that's, that's what this basically says. Violation of this policy or falsification, meaning that the whole due process, the whole.
It implies due process.
It does say that.
Everything has gone through that, that, that before it's a violation.
Okay.
It implies due process.
Correct.
I mean, we, we don't, we don't, to my knowledge, we don't, without investigation
Correct.
of anything, offer disciplinary action that would be something of this nature, violation of this policy. In order to exhibit disciplinary, disciplinary action for violation of said policy, there would have to be some level of investigation to.
Inquiry.
Inquiry into it.
And the level, and the level remains, the level of, of any disciplinary action remains completely open.
Sure.
We haven't defined.
Yeah, it could be verbal, written.
A verbal warning, hey, don't do this again, all the way up to, you know, progressive discipline, all the way to.
How about for pro, possible disciplinary action? In other words, this seems to be a foregone conclusion that several of these things that we're talking about have happened. I don't know. It certainly doesn't say it in the statement. It does have an implication, but possible. If, you know, I.
I think this is standard language.
Well, the question would then be, did someone commit a violation or not, right?
Okay, yes.
Okay. That's spoken to by the fact of a irregularity was brought to our attention, okay? At that point, then, if a determination, if a determination is made that a violation has occurred, which is part of the investigatory process that we use within any of our disciplinary procedures, then violation, once established of this policy or falsification of required records shall be grounds for disciplinary action. So in order to get to the fact of violation, there's already been, there's, there's already been some level of inquiry conducted.
Can we say that?
And, and within, in the level of inquiry like that, it would require essential due process.
I'd, I'd like to see it be set, you know, it just seems like an open door to me.
I understand what you're saying.
If violation means all that, then.
Well, in order to get, in order to reach the determination that there's a violation
It has to be.
or to reach the determination that there's been a falsification of required records, we would have to have crossed our Ts and dotted our Is to, to, to find out whether that is the case.
Due process.
Right. And if we find out that that is the case, then, then, then it's established that there's a violation. At that point, seven applies. Violation or falsification of records is grounds for dismissal.
Until due process happens, it's only a suspected violation or alleged violation.
Yeah, yeah, that's alleged, exactly. That's what I'm thinking. And so if we said violation, if following due process, let's just say.
It's in there. The process is in there.
It is. I, I think I understand it better now.
Disciplinary action that's expressed right here, the entire process of disciplinary action
It's in there.
encompasses a procedural
Correct.
a due process scenario that is triggered with any employee discipline. In other words, I'm not aware of any employee discipline from verbal warning, or even leading the consequence, whether it leads to verbal warning or dismissal. There is always, there's always due process within employee discipline for an employee to challenge that discipline and to challenge whether the facts used to establish the violation are valid and, or, or not. So.
And if, and if, if that due process is violated or suspected of being violated, they have the right to appeal the decision, all the way up to us or beyond.
Right. They don't leave their, their rights at the door. Now, this could be, say, a coach that's left to the, to the, to, to the newspaper. There's been a violation, you know, to the newspaper for months perhaps, and, and how do you reel that back in?
I'm not sure what you're.
What I'm saying is, a violation, we, we talked about, you, you gave a lot of explanation. The, the violation, is that the occurrence or is that the, after the due process? See, because it could be tried in the newspaper, and so the coach is dealing with that say for two months, five months, while due process might be taking place. And it's, it appears there's a violation. The violation seems to be the incident.
Right. If due process is taking place, and that means inherently that there is, number one, still an investigation, the investigation, part of the, of an investigation or inquiry of any level is to determine whether a violation has been made.
So we could say violation through, a, a, a validated violation or something like that, then, then it would satisfy me. I.
It wouldn't be impermissible to say that, but it is unnecessary to say that because of the fact that everything is built into the disciplinary action. So a disciplinary action inherently contains due process rights for the individual. And it is not a violation if a violation cannot be proven or cannot be shown.
How about suspected violation of a board member king?
Violation is never grounds for disciplinary action. That's just a rule, a basic.
So, so, so it, it does, it needs a predicate. I think it needs a a prove, a proven violation, or, you know, you have to wordsmith it, but what the correct word is, but the classification of the violation, that means after due process violation of this policy, for example, that would satisfy me. And that's what you're saying, that that's incumbent in it somewhere.
If we were going to add anything there, I would simply add confirmed violation.
Okay, okay, that helps. That, that, now, a confirmed violation means there was due process. Okay.
Confirmed violation of this policy or falsification of required records
Yes.
shall be grounds for disciplinary action.
Yeah.
A.
A.
A confirmed.
A confirmed violation of this policy.
A confirmed.
Okay, a confirmed violation. Okay, that's good.
I mean, but really, I'm, I'm fine with, we're gonna move on, but really, that's.
Everybody's fine.
It's already in there. You don't have to put that in.
Right. The only way you can have a violation is if the violation has been confirmed, but if you need that word there, we're good.
It sure helps me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think adding it for clarity doesn't detract from anything that we would.
Everything else is good.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Everybody good with this one?
So deletion of six and remaining seven with that edit?
Yes.
Guys, it's at that eleven-thirty mark that we told we were gonna break. So we're gonna recess for lunch.
And the next one we'll be moving on to is.
Sixty-six ten, page eight thirty-four.
Yes, recess for lunch.
We're back on, guys. We will continue with our Neola policy review. I think we stopped at
Sixty-six-ten.
School internal funds. We'll pick up there.
I don't know what you did, but it's a lot more readable.
Yeah, they fixed the TV.
Wow.
They turned the brightness on the TV.
Okay. Huge. Yeah, that makes all the difference.
Did we have anything that was edited in this policy that?
Okay, policy sixty-six-ten, that's on page eight thirty-four, school internal funds. Staff made a few edits on this, so we'll...
Yeah, I had two flags in it, but let's see where they were. Ending limits, this section.
Okay, that's a minor edit. Okay, everything that was edited by staff is minor. Three B expenditures requiring prior approval. Any gifts, awards, including scholarships or honorariums to individuals based on value defined in procedures. That way, it's not specific to a dollar amount here.
Okay.
Those are amounts defined in procedures. That's the substantive change. Provided we're fine with that, that's all that we needed to address with this policy.
I had one more question. And let's see, four. I fundraising L-L. It's down towards the bottom. I'm sorry, you went back up to the top and I was keeping on... This is a seven-page policy in our book here.
What page are you on, Allison?
I am on page eight thirty-nine L.
Alright.
Which is student travel, and I believe, let's see, it's under five. Yeah, student travel, okay. Keep going. Oh, maybe it was right there. Advance, yeah, I was just curious, in advance arrangements. We had this conversation yesterday, but the third sentence there says, "Checks may be prepared in advance for the exact amount and payable to the corporation." I know that checks, I guess, are the only way we currently have available, but just for the purpose of ensuring we don't have to come back and make these changes through rulemaking again, is there a way to say, "Payment may be prepared in advance," or something else that could also be an electronic form of payment?
Yeah, we talked about that. I think we landed on approved payment.
Approved payment may be prepared in advance.
Approved payment method.
Don't specify Bitcoin.
Yeah. May be prepared in exact amount payable to corporation. The faculty sponsor company and students would be temporary custodian. See, then it says temporary custodian of the checks.
Of payment.
Approved payments and responsible for obtaining an invoice for the exact amount of the check, exact amount of the approved payment. And then the last, it says check again, my goodness. From the corporation or proprietor upon presentation of the payment.
Approved payment.
Okay, that was the only other thing that I had in that policy.
Good.
But do we all agree with that?
Yep.
Yes.
I just, I hate to think that we, if we get to the point that we can make advanced payments for student travel and field trips and things that don't have to be a check, then let's get there. Okay? Internal fund check, there's another one. See the word check? Good job, Terry. What's this one?
And don't use Deutsch coin. Deutsch, Deutsch coin.
Internal fund check. Or from an approved petty cash fund. All disbursements by any club.
Well, keeping in mind, this is for, the policy itself is speaking to school internal funds.
Right.
I'm not really sure that for school internal funds, there is any other method.
But if there is, then this will work.
Other than a check, this one may need to stay check, because it does say, and each school can have one checking account, I see that. All expenditures from school funds must be made by check.
Because otherwise, if we're talking about approved payments, we do open up the avenue that someone could use a P-card for use of, to pay something that is a school internal fund, when I think that's one of the checks and balances here is to say that's for school internal funds, it only comes from a check, not a P-card, which is then reimbursed or something like, or P-card payment, it's a check.
Did Ms. Boston Ellis give her seal of approval on these? Then I have a feeling she has a good reason.
Nancy, would you look at this in reference to your thought?
I think Ms. Boston Ellis clearly has a good reason why it says check.
Well, my only reasoning on the...
You mean the P-card again?
Yeah, it's coming up again, and I would like to accrue benefits to the district if possible.
My only reason was to deal with the student travel. That's the only reason that, I don't know that it needs to be changed anywhere else, except, I guess if the entire policy says that everything has to happen by check, then us making these changes are null and void. But I just can picture that if we were doing field trips, that's the one that keeps coming to mind, wouldn't it be so much easier to book that field trip in another approved payment method, other than a check that has...
A P-card. That gets benefits.
A P-card that gets benefits.
Absolutely.
But if what Terry found when she did the search for check, if the entire policy, starting back on the first page, says something about all funds must be dispersed to be a check, then making those changes...
Maybe we can change that.
I'm reluctant to give any additional opinion, other than we could always say approved payments, and the part, the first part says it's only by check, because this has gone through finance and Ms. Boston Ellis, and they've vetted this in the way that they want it. And I don't, I don't know that any, any change that I, or alteration that I make here, or that the board makes, might then create more lack of clarity when we're seeking to expand. So, that would be, of course...
But it might also add the benefit.
...control over its policies, but there may be reasons for why check was left as the, as the sole payment method that is accepted here. I can envision that.
I like the idea of Mr., Board Member Thoreau, would you articulate that a little bit? Because it's important.
Yeah, well, we talked about it before, you know, previously, and with the evolution of payments, electronic payments. I'm not sure when this, the date is of this policy, but I'm wondering if it was prior, you know, to electronic forms of payment. Now, and so as we evolve, when there's an opportunity, fewer and fewer people are using checks. And it does seem like the school system is almost the last entity to catch up on things like this. So, you know, if Teresa's already vetted it, and that's the only form of payment we can take right now because of old software, you know, I don't know, she has to have her reasons. And I'd love to know what those are, and see if there's any room to just make it more efficient and actually maybe even beneficial.
So, approved payment does work.
Well, I think the only reason that I can envision immediately is that this, this policy is speaking specifically to school internal funds. And perhaps for auditing purposes, there is a need for those to occur by means of a check and not by means of alternate payment method. And so, that could be one of the factors involved here, though that's my speculation. So, given the chance that, given the fact that the finance department and through, by and through Ms. Ellis, or Boston Ellis was, has reviewed this, any changes to it, I don't, I don't want us to insert a monkey wrench into what the reasoning is for that, so...
Well, I'm really strong on the points of gaining revenue with other approved methods that could accrue benefits to the district.
And I think this may go, and interestingly enough, we're going to be talking about auditors in a few minutes, but I think this may go to the question of what the auditors require. And if the auditors are requiring in their internal school accounting audits that you not only have the invoice, but you have the copy of the check, the copy of the canceled check, whatever, and that, then it would be even double duty for you to require someone to pay by an alternate payment method if the auditors are... Because then you're going to have to have a separate receipt of some kind of the, when that debit card or credit card was processed. So, I think this, making corrections to it, again, I'm, with the field trips, I would love the opportunity for us to fix that. If we could accrue whatever with paying for field trips, that'd be great. But everything else may be based on what the auditor requires.
Can, is there a chance that we could save this till we get some more information from Teresa's office? Because I do know that these internal audits are a big deal, and they are very exacting. One time I went to Walmart to pick up something for the school, and it was nine hundred degrees out, and I was sweating like a hog, and I got one bottle of water. Didn't even think about it. But I will say, it was Peggy, the Secretary of Lisbon awarded a million times, in front of us. I mean, she caught that right away, and she's like, no, you needed to pay for that separately, for a seventy-five cent bottle of water. So, that's how deep the auditors go. So, we really need more information.
They are, and even like...
About what statute is, and how constrained we are, because I, I do, I'm worried about that.
I'm good with that.
I say, I was going to say, I think it behooves us to trust our CFO in this matter. Again, I agree, like, even with the field trips, like, there's even time limits. Like, when that teacher gets that money, by the time it makes it, you know, to the secretary, like, everything's timed. And when you look at this and you see the two persons, you know, having to sign, there's probably a checks and balances thing, for sure, to make sure that nothing, there's no error for anyone to break law.
I trust that the board would not want to tinker with, for example, something like the search and seizure policy without the input of your attorney. And so, on that, that's, you trusted my input. And likewise here, I believe it's appropriate to trust the input of Ms. Boston Ellis and to seek it if it's, we have not, if there's any lack of clarity here before we alter it, so...
Definitely seek it before we alter it, and it may be because, again, it's sort of the way we've always done it. I'd just love to know if there are any other options in terms of audits and in terms of making this work. We approve these, the internal audits, and they're all separate. They come across for our, for our board approval. And so, we know how exacting it is. But there could be an oppo, if there is an opportunity, great. If there's not, then we've asked, because we're going to come back anyway.
Could we get an opportu, get a question on that today, Superintendent? Could we just get, just run a bar?
Chair, if I may thank you. To, to the questions that are being asked, I have a question first. Does what we see on the screen reflect the changes that Ms. Boston Ellis and the team just made?
With the exception of what's in green right now that we just added or started to add, given
At the board table.
our discussion, that being approved payments, inserting that in place of the word checks, which is not a finalized thing, we just talked about that. So, other than that, what's in here is everything that we received as edits from...
Unless you sent them within the last forty-eight hours.
Yeah, they were, it was this morning.
Oh, they were done this morning? Okay, great.
They were updated from yesterday.
Good job, Terry.
So, my second portion of that was if, question for the board, if you would like to have Ms. Boston Ellis come answer questions, because it sounds like there are multiples. But this is something that the team has gone back over, and this is the recommendation from the CFO.
And we're undoing what they, what we sent back to undo, so...
Yeah, we're not the experts in this, and I'm sure there are reasons why Teresa and her team put only checks in there. And wrote this, and I haven't seen anything out of that department to make me think that I should go in and change her...
Can we, can we table this?
Not without asking for clarity.
Not without asking.
I'd like to ask for clarity.
Yeah, can we ask her to come? Do we want her to come today, or do we want to wait till the next time for review?
We never know till you ask.
Guys, do y'all want her to come today or wait till the next time we do review?
We're here, let's do it. I mean, if she's available, just ask her. Approved method would be, payment method would be sufficient, I would think.
Well, as of right now, given that what's earlier in this, in this policy, whether we say check or approved payment, within this policy is already structured that the only type of payment utilized, that can be utilized is check. So, it makes no difference if we put approved payments here, if the, earlier in the policy, it still requires check.
Yeah, it'd be universal.
I don't want us to wait, just hold time. We can move on, and if she comes, we can...
If she's available, I mean, we don't even know what her partnership looks like. And we're going to be meeting again, right?
Yes, in March.
We are, I just, yeah, I think if we can resolve, if it's possible to resolve this one today, great.
Right. That would be, yeah, that'd be optimal.
Okay. So, let's move forward. Was it sixty-eight forty? Is that the next one?
Auditor selection committee, page eight fifty-three.
Moving right along.
Has that been pulled? I'm not seeing it on the screen.
It's on this list.
Yeah, but I don't see it on the screen.
We talked about it yesterday, I think, but I'm not certain.
I thought that was one that we pulled for... It was connected to something else, wasn't it?
It was on our list yesterday.
Eight, we're on eight fifty-three, correct?
No.
Page eight fifty-three, yes.
Okay, Allison, I think one of the things you mentioned was on C, one area director, and I don't think they're called area directors anymore.
That's why I think it was, because I'm not...
These are changes right here on this, on this screen. The auditor selection committee must consist of at least three members. One member of the auditor selection committee must be the member of the governing body, period. Not listing the names of the people.
Let me ask a question. Terry, is that still under to be cleaned?
No, it's under review.
It's under review?
I think so. Yeah, it's still under pull for review.
Okay, I'm on the wrong thing, then, okay.
If I may, Chair, to this, that was our recommendation. Whenever we have specific titles, it, that requires us to come back every time for a board revision. And it certainly just, I think, keeps it simple to refer to the committee, which is appropriate.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You mean, we're actually done with this one?
Yeah.
We're through with it.
Moving on, that was on the end.
Seventy-two thirty?
That one is pending.
Pending, so we can skip seventy-two thirty. Eighty-five hundred.
Food service.
There, there, I don't know that they're following along with what we're saying.
Are y'all with me?
We?
Yeah, eighty-five hundred.
Go ahead, Terry.
Prior, before we do that, we're, we're just discussing among Mr. Whitmer and myself, with, well, you want to articulate your question here, or your concern?
Well, just that, the suggested policy, maybe your existing policy lists who's gonna be on the committee, at least by title. If you take that out, then how will the board select who's on the committee? And, and which board member, I guess they vote annually on the board member, but it doesn't say, I guess, it's implied that the board will-
It says you only need three, and the chairs will always be a chair.
Well, and two eighteen point three nine one, I'll have to look up the statutory reference, but I believe it does require that certain people be on this auditor selection committee.
Let's look at the statute.
So, I'm pretty sure that we can't just delete all of these titles.
Two eighteen point three nine one?
It said at least three, so are those three specified?
Two eighteen, three ninety-one.
Two eighteen, three ninety-one.
The other two or more individuals may not be employees.
Two eighteen.
Or the superintendent or the chief financial officer.
Three ninety-one.
Yeah.
Here it is, each local government entity school board charter.
Okay, item two says, we shall establish an auditor selection committee. The auditor selection committee for a county must, that's for a county, that's not us.
C.
There's C, district school board, or- B, sorry, auditor selection committee for a district school board must contain at least three members. One member must be a member of the governing body of an entity specified in this paragraph who will serve as chair.
An employee.
C modifies that to say that employee, chief executive or chief financial officer of the county special district or school district may not serve as a member of the auditor selection committee and established under this subsection. However, an employee, chief executive officer, or chief financial officer-
Serve in advisory capacity.
May serve in advisory capacity.
So it doesn't specifically say which-
Other than a board member.
Other than a board member.
So then previously listing all those people that were employees-
Was not necessary.
Were not in statute.
Were not in statute.
Well, it's, let's see, the-
Like, don't let me miss it, because yesterday I was reading statute, and I was like, oh, I didn't read that next part down. I'm like-
Two sixteen point three nine one? Two eighteen point three nine one.
I mean, I think that one's pretty clear, that an employee cannot serve. So then, has our auditing committee been out of compliance? It's just a question, I'm not accusing, I'm just asking a question.
Says an employee, a chief executive officer, member of the audit selection, must be a member of the governing body, that's a board member.
That's a board member, yep.
Who shall serve as the chair. An employee, a chief executive officer, can we just quote the statute? That would probably be the easiest thing.
And add section C to our policy?
Well, we already have this language in there that says shall be done in accordance with-
But we need that language, because currently this policy written sixty-eight forty in our notebooks lists titles of employees.
And it does here, too.
I would say just quote the statute, what do you say, Superintendent?
Thank you, that's, that's why I think we've had struck through the specific names and stuck with what it cannot be, and that the committee must consist of those three members. That comes from statute, is my understanding and based on my reading.
I think the board was required, though, right?
Yes.
Yes, it says board member.
Which is there, we, the concern that I had was that the committee listed positions that may or may not be appropriate. It wasn't statute driven.
Right.
That was my only recommendation, if you remove something was not statute driven.
What is our current policy? I guess I can find that out, I just, I want to make sure that-
So if we just put the statute in there, then we're in compliance, correct? We just quote the statute.
The primary purpose of the committee, I can't-
Yes.
In accordance with-
Right. The primary purpose of the committee is to assist the board in selecting an auditor-
In accordance.
In accordance with two eighteen point three nine one. And then the auditor, okay, the auditor selection committee must consist of at least three members. One member must be a member of the governing body.
And that's why that's still in there.
Which is, which is the statute.
Yeah, it wasn't struck.
And then C, just add C to, to it. That would cover it.
Terry, can you, yeah, this is two C, is that correct?
Yes, it is. This is the wording you'd like?
I mean, it covers it.
We don't have to talk about charter schools and all that.
That's the last cut.
Terry, go back.
So the purpose of the auditor selection committee is to determine who the auditor will be?
Three nine one.
That, that's the purpose of this committee?
I'm looking at two eighteen point three nine one.
Because our current policy on audits just says the school board may select an independent auditor to perform the annual financial audit. It doesn't specify that we have to have a committee that selects that auditor, because ultimately this board is gonna have to approve that, right? The contact with the auditor?
There is a committee that selects the audit, um, the auditor, because I-
Yeah, this is statute or now.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was saying, this is a, this is a law change, which is why it might have been in there before, and it's not now, so.
Why it wasn't previously in our policies?
Right, because I was looking at two thousand and eighteen version, and it doesn't have the same language.
So, auditor selection committee must consist of these three members, one member of all this. You can probably take out those districts, school, no, charter schools.
Well, then, your line at the bottom, under all this part we were striking through, shall be non-voting members, well, that's kind of already advisory capacity, right?
So, so none of those individuals could serve on, in an auditor selection committee as of now, correct?
Correct, since the law changed.
Since the law changed, so, since the law changed, it completely changed what we, who can serve. And now my question that I'm trying to review is if one member must be a board member, and no member can be an employee, chief executive officer, or chief financial officer.
How's the committee chosen?
Yeah, I'm looking for what, who, who can be on the committee.
Go back to the statute.
Board member is an employee.
Go back to the statute, no, we're not, we're not there.
Right, except that they're an employee who's required to be on the board.
Go back to the statute, Terry.
So everyone on the committee other than the board member is now required to be community members.
Must consist of at least three members. One member of the auditor selection must be a member of the governing body of an entity, that's clear. Who shall serve as a chair. An employee may not serve as a member of an auditor selection committee established under this subsection. However, an employee, a chief, they can serve as an advisory capacity. Do we need that one in there? It doesn't tell you who can be.
No, it would, it would appear that it just limits it to no, no one who's, who's in our employee apart from a board member. And this is something that the board could, as to the, as to the selection of the auditor selection committee, the board could vote on that at its organizational meeting, you know.
And who will be on that committee?
Who will be on the committee.
That seems like a logical time to do it.
So then, we could put this statement in there, go back to the statute, to the policy, Terry. Take out all that other stuff you just put in there, from behind body, yeah, and then put, we can put some, no, put that, what you just had, put that back.
Undo that one.
Back, the last thing.
Undo that last change.
Undo the last change. Leave that.
And then add something in there stating that the, the rest of the committee could be done at the organizational meeting.
The committee will be chosen.
Selection of the remaining-
Is that good with you?
Members.
Will be selected, or selection of the-
Will be conducted.
At the annual organizational meeting.
The board's annual. And how are we gonna be recommending people? I mean, that's, we'll have to figure that out, I guess, now that it has to be members of the committee.
How often do they even, I mean, how often does this committee need? It's not once a year to select it, right? If you're selecting-
What if we want to do it another time?
The committee, how often do we do that? Because-
We just went through one.
Did we select them?
That would be a question we need to know, or I would like to know.
The auditing, but, because I got interviewed, I wasn't, maybe I was part of the committee and I didn't know it.
And I would add to this, though, though it is, routinely could be added, at, conducted at the board's annual organizational meeting, in order so it's not the hamstring as to one particular date, I would add, or, with notice, or with proper notice, at any-
Meeting of the board.
Meeting of the board.
Perfect. Remaining selection committee members?
And we don't have any guidelines as to who the remaining selection committee members are, just that there must be two of them, right?
Do we, do we not need to ensure we have language there that says that they can't be employees? I mean, I think that-
Well, it's in, it's in statute, so if, if we want to, if we want to spell that out within policy so that we're making sure that it's referenced within policy, what is also in statute, then we can. Otherwise, the primary purpose is to make sure we're doing it in accordance with two eighteen point three nine one. Then I would say, if you wanted to add that, I would say the auditor selection committee must consist of at least three members. One member of the auditor selection committee must be a member of the governing body. And, right after that, I would say-
The following cannot serve.
That-
And cannot be-
The following people cannot serve.
An employee, chief executive, or chief financial officer.
Employee, a chief executive officer, or a chief financial officer of the county, of the, of the district school board. All right, all right, Neil has a handy drafting note here. The committee must be comprised of a minimum of three members. A board member is the only individual specifically identified in Florida statute two eighteen point three nine one that must be a member of the committee. The other two or more individuals may not be employees, the superintendent or the chief financial officer of the district. Sound good? Just take that language exactly as is.
Doesn't say that it can't be the superintendent?
It does.
We'll type it in so you can see it.
Chief executive officer.
Superintendent would be chief executive officer, so.
That's fine.
Chair, if I may, just a matter of note on the subject. I'm told by the team, we have five more years under the current contract, and then we'll be under the new rule.
Right, and we don't need an auditor selection committee until such time as, right.
Thought I would mention that based on the conversations about-
So this, this policy-
Five more years.
My, oh, go ahead.
That's what I'm told, no, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead, yeah, I was just curious, so when was our last auditing? Because I sat on that, and it seems like it's been-
I'll check.
A while, so I'm kind of curious, just so that these board members, if it pops up-
Certainly.
They know what's coming.
Yeah, because I don't think it's ever been since Nancy and I have been on board.
I know I sat on that, and I think what, I know what I sat on is different than what you sat on, Nancy, you were the state. This is like, you know, Purvis and Gray?
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, and sometimes you go into the archives.
That's what this committee does, so they choose the slide down.
The auditor, I got it, okay, yep, that makes sense.
So for the purposes of cho, anyway, I'm just thinking for the purposes of choosing the auditor-
Just delete the word importantly.
That is a multi-year contract, I guess, that we go into, or we only have to have one, an audit, a full book audit every-
So many years?
So many years? I don't know, that opens up more questions I don't want to ask right now.
Members, this is just language that Neil had suggested, saying that there are people who are gonna be on the committee in an advisory way, not as members.
Right.
And you could list here, if you wanted to, for example, the superintendent and the chief financial officer. But you don't have to do that, it's your choice.
I think it'd be good to put them there, put it there, at least it, um, it lets people know that they, they can be in an advisory capacity. So it doesn't mess them up if they see them in the room.
Yeah, we have it in writing.
Right, it's in writing.
Except for, except for the Quinn, maybe conduct.
Until statute gets changed again, and then they-
And then it's lined up with statute, so.
And since an auditor selection committee is not chosen on an annual basis, they're chosen when our contract is expired with the auditor selection committee, I would say we probably shouldn't even delineate that it is-
That it's chosen.
Chosen, other than by, at a meeting with pro, a proper notice.
Right.
You gotta put that back.
Yeah, let's get rid of that. I'm taking that out.
No, the selection, um, that, that you have right there can go at the very end of the next paragraph. So, cut and paste it to there.
Could you say however, the superintendent or chief financial officer of the district may serve in an advisory capacity? It's probably not gonna make a correct-
I think this is that update, they were telling us about with board docs, it's messing things up, so you don't have to manually type it, most likely.
What you cut and paste.
Yeah.
We were informed late last night that there was a change or alternat, alteration or update to board docs that was affecting the ability for any cut and paste.
Oh, yeah, we figured that out yesterday.
And so that-
That's bad timing.
And so then immediately after that would be the indication of whom we can, uh-
Who can serve as an advisory capacity?
The superintendent, chief financial officer.
There it says they shall be, i- i- non-voting members of the audit committee. I think that it's more proper for us to say that they may serve in an advisory capacity.
Right.
So, as opposed to being non-voter members. So, the language that we just had, the following indiv- So, the language that we just had, the following individuals are not members of the committee but may serve in an advisory capacity. The superintendent, chief financial officer, director of, uh, finance.
And then strike the rest.
And those probably should be in a bulleted format, like that A, B, C above.
Or simply say in one sentence.
The superintendent.
The superintendent, comma, chief financial officer, comma, and director, or director of finance.
Are not members of the committee but may serve.
But may serve in.
Yeah.
Or you could say may serve in an advisory capacity.
Okay, then remove the sentence just above that. Yep.
Yep, that's all.
Or. Yeah, or.
Or and.
Does that meet with everyone's approval?
Should be and or.
I think it should be and.
What, and director of finance?
An employee.
The superintendent.
May serve, so any of those employees can. So I think it's and.
And.
Cause actually any employee.
Take out or.
Yeah, make it and instead of or.
Right.
Because, yeah.
Well, and do we want to outline here? An employee. Chief executive officer or chief financial officer. I don't know where the director of finance language came from.
That's, uh, staff-driven.
Okay, if we want that, that's fine, but what statute says is.
Any employee.
Right. An employee, comma, a chief executive officer, comma, or a chief financial officer um, may serve in an advisory capacity.
Okay.
And it says or. So, in that case, we say the superintendent, who is our chief executive officer? Chief financial officer. Um, director of finance isn't listed in statute, but it says in statute.
Or chief, yeah.
The people that are listed in statute are an employee, chief executive officer, chief financial officer may serve in advisory capacity.
So can we put, can we, so can we take director of finance and put employee?
Uh, you could say the superintendent, chief financial officer, or other employee.
Yes.
Or any other employee, whatever you say.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a clarifying question because we're saying superintendent in here, but the statute says chief executive officer, do we need to?
And it doesn't say that in the statute. We should say what the statute says.
State that, and even if, if the board so chooses to put superintendent, but it, in statute it says chief executive officer.
Let's see what the statute says.
Right, the superintendent being the chief executive officer, that's why we put that, but we can say the superintendent as chief executive officer.
Yeah, thank you.
It's fine.
Might provide. Okay.
In that case, because of our commas, um, I don't want it to say the superintendent as chief executive officer or as chief financial officer, so we perhaps want to just say what it says in statute, which is simply the chief executive officer, comma, chief financial officer, comma, or any other employee. So just get rid of the word superintendent altogether. Top paragraph, same. May not be, well, that's still referring to who can't be a member. That's still, uh, yeah, we need to change that to. Who can't be a member is still the.
Chief executive.
Chief executive officer.
Employee, chief executive officer, or chief financial officer.
Should just mirror the bottom.
Right.
Just mirror the exact same language.
Chief financial officer. Chief financial officer.
Or the chief, yep.
Spell chief right.
Yeah, she got it, it was a line through the.
Oh, okay.
Through the C. It's struck. Okay, so the final language there is the committee must be comprised of a minimum of three members. A board member is the only individual specifically identified in Florida statute two eighteen point three nine one that must be a member of the committee. The other two or more individuals may not be employees, the chief executive officer, or the chief financial officer of the district. The selection of the remaining members will be conducted at the board's annual, uh, get rid of that. Maybe, will be conducted with proper notice at any meeting of the board.
Yep.
Good.
Make comma with proper notice, comma. With proper notice, comma, at any meeting of the board.
That's good.
Yep.
Then underneath that, the chief financial officer, I'm sorry, the chief executive officer, chief financial officer, or any other employee may serve in an advisory capacity, period.
Yep.
The board will provide adequate support to the committee to discharge its responsibilities. The board, with the advice of counsel of the committee, will ensure that the auditors have unrestricted acts, reasonable access to district personnel and public documents within legal requirements.
It's fine.
Moving on.
To be cleaned. Or cleaned, or whatever it is.
The gifts, grants, and bequests, that one is not coming to us today.
Not ready.
That one's still pending.
Food service.
All those items, chair, have been submitted.
Eighty-five hundred.
Okay.
We're a long way.
Wait a minute, what about seventy-two thirty?
So seventy-two thirty, did those edits get submitted? They did not come.
Gifts, grants, and bequests. Uh, that indicates that it was edited by staff and edits are pending, so we just received those edits, we haven't, we haven't been able to bring those.
Okay, so we're gonna go by that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so, food service program, eighty-five hundred.
It's on page, uh, nine seventy-four, well, it actually starts on nine seventy-five.
Um, this one is just to ensure that that third paragraph. Scroll up, I think. I think this one is just about that third paragraph.
Oh, the, the.
Ah, yes.
That whole thing?
Yep, thirty dozen.
That's our twelve. You found the twelve?
This is the twelfth one.
All right, we'll cut and paste that alteration. We don't need to discuss this, except to make sure that we mark it to add that.
Yay.
Nine seventy-five.
Um, yeah, we're, we're moving on from it, actually.
Right.
The next one's gonna be.
Public.
Public attendance at school events.
That's policy ninety-one sixty.
We're in the nines.
Yep, I think we have to go back and do some too, but anyway, I'm excited to, yes.
Do not burst my bubble.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm celebrating in my head right now.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Ninety-one sixty.
That is page one zero two three.
Do we have any changes on this?
Sorry?
Do we have any changes?
I had a couple of things underlined, but let me see why. It, it mentions the non-alcohol.
I know, the last time we discussed it, it was about the alcohol on campus, so was it that?
I had some of that underlined, I also had something underlined about ticketing.
That's right, you had a thing about ticketing.
Yes, you, you brought that up, uh, I recall that we were talking about, we were talking about ticketing, I'm trying to remember the context. Let's see if I have. We did have, if, if, in referring to the alcoholic beverage portion of the policy, that was in the third paragraph. Um, I don't, I'm not sure what we landed or settled on, but the discussion here was the fact of public attendance at school events. As to, no alcoholic beverage may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by the district or any function occurring on school board property, and, and that was limited by the following, uh, line. Except for curricular purposes and with prior written consent from the superintendent and in compliance with Florida law, at any function sponsored by the district and/or any function occurring on board property. So, that would be those unusual circumstances in which we were renting a facility to someone for the purpose of, say, there was a sommelier, sommelier wine tasting from France who was, or the culinary academy was using, you know, a, a sherry or, or something like that, it's, it's in compliance with, with Florida law, uh, and it would require for a curricular purpose, so.
Cooking wines or something.
Like chicken, making chicken marsala.
Chicken marsala.
Yeah.
Or if it's in connection with a, um, uh, with a cur, a curricular purpose, so for example, and I'm just throwing out a potential example.
The three of us are all laughing because of, anyway.
So we, we can't have bourbon chicken no more?
Right, well, actually, you know, you may have, uh, the, the, the cooking classes sort of things, but also part of a culinary institute that is not associated with the school, I'm thinking of our adult education, uh, scenarios.
School board property.
May, it's school board property, but it may have, um, uh, some, something where people are being taught, the students are being taught as to wine pairings with certain
Got it.
types of foods or something like that. I don't think it, anything here, because it wouldn't be for a curricular purpose, intends that there would be a, a, an event of which the consumption of alcohol is just, you know, we're not serving beer at football games.
Or like, um, margarita machine in the teacher's lounge.
Right, right.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry, would you say this name?
I was just, well, I, you hear about like how a margarita machine in the teacher's lounge or something like that, like, we wouldn't do that. Is what, that is no room for that.
Right.
Geez.
But.
Stripped around.
So this, this policy, and this isn't current policy of ours, or is it current policy of ours?
Current, it's current.
This is current?
Go ahead.
So, in the event of a district-sponsored event in an off-site location, a cash bar would be prohibited by this policy?
Um, correct, because it would be at any function sponsored by the district or at any function occurring on board property. Now that then brings, of course, into question, unless we, unless we define this more narrowly.
The, the three of us are laughing, again.
Sure, unless we define it more narrowly into the scenario where there may be a community event which is sponsored by the district or partially by the district at least, and attended, uh, which, which does have a, you know, a, a cash bar, for example, something like that, over which we may exercise limited, if any, control. But it is something that we, you know, we, we, we're not sponsoring the bar, but we are sponsoring an event and that, part of that event may be that people may opt to drink alcohol there, it's not on school board property. So that would be the question that we're trying to get to here, right?
I'm, I'm reading it, no alcoholic beverage may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function. Keyword here for me is sponsored by.
Yep.
The district. So, say, I'm gonna get away from what I'm thinking.
Come up with another scenario.
Let's say the, 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 the youth fair that they have over at.
Well, they're sponsored by or co-sponsored by.
As co-sponsored by, what, they're selling beer or something like that? Are we in violation?
Do they sell beer at the youth fair?
I don't know, I've just.
We, we, we need to have another scenario.
I don't know, I just threw that out there.
We, we need to have a scenario.
Hypothetical.
A hypothetical.
Legal, legal.
A couple of things here for you, first of all, our current policy is three point four two. Our current policy says, no person shall be in possession of or be under the influence of an intoxicating beverage um, or an illegal or mood-altering, behavior-modifying, or controlled substance, as defined by Florida statutes, um, while on school property, at school-sponsored activities, or whilst on school trips involving students, okay? Now, um, we are, Neola's model plan gives us a choice between, firstly.
Option.
The options are.
Then sponsored by the board.
Then sponsored by the board, or B is on school district property. Now, when we initially went through this process, we chose both. School, sponsor, sponsored by the, by the school district and also school district property, so both of them. Now, we can choose one or the other, um, but the sort of other measure we put in here was our language regarding with prior written super, uh, approval of the superintendent and for curricular purposes, so.
And for, and or.
And for.
No, I think it's, I think it's both, for, because our, our, it says except for curricular purposes and with prior written consent, so someone couldn't just serve alcohol and say it's for curricular purposes, if they're doing so.
Superintendent approval.
It has to have been approved by the superintendent for, according to what's in this model.
Hold on, hold on, Jerry. Superintendent got something in the approach, you gotta get this out, say this.
Yeah.
Let's hear this, let's hear this, Dr. G.
For my destiny. Thank you, chair, I would like to go back, we, Attorney Powers knows, we had extended conversation with our whole team about this, uh, policy. Attorney Powers, could you perhaps go back to the definition of sponsor? Because my recollection is, when we had that conversation, it was, we, we discussed a number of different scenarios and what would fall under the definition of sponsor?
Right, there, there could be multiple definitions, and one definition is any event to which we contribute, okay? That's, I don't think the definition we intend, because we can't always control, we don't exercise control over that. For, um, we're pulling it up now with the, the language there. So, the fact that we either A, participate in, or, um, pay a portion of the fee toward an event is different than an event that we put on, an event that we plan, an event that we organize and we exercise control over. So.
Or a department of ours has control over.
Okay, and we, we don't, there is no, other than plain meaning, we don't have a definition that is in the law of what sponsored means. And so if we alter, if ultimately if we choose to use that language to say a district-sponsored event, um, we would need to further define what a sponsored event is, um, as opposed to relying simply on, you know, I, I, what is a school-sponsored field trip? All right, school-sponsored field trip, we're, we're organizing the field trip, we're going to some location, right? Now, at that location, if part of that location is going to a restaurant, that restaurant may serve alcohol as part of its normal course of business.
What about if the people that are participating in this event are only participating in the event because they are representing this district? I mean, they wouldn't be participating in this event other than them, if they were not part of this. I mean, they wouldn't be participating in this event other than them, if they were not part of the district. Per se, a student, per se, a staff member, whatever. School sponsor?
District sponsor.
A district sponsor.
I, I don't have a simple legal answer for you.
Yeah, I don't either, but that's, that's that.
What does it need to say?
Again, we get into some, some gray area.
What does it need to say? Yeah.
That's what I would like to.
I think the terms that we need to make sure that if we are going to specify sponsorship would be that we exercise control, and Mr. Whitman, what would be the term?
Operate.
We, that, that we operate and exercise control over. Now, again, that would, that would limit, if you think of the fact of students are going to Olive Garden, okay? As part of their field trip, they're gonna be, also be dining at Olive Garden, all right? That's a school-sponsored field trip. Now, at Olive Garden, at this school-sponsored event, alcohol will be served. Not to our students, not to our staff, but at that location, alcohol is served to those who are legally permitted to, you know, consume it. We exercise no control over that, we exercise no control over that location and/or the other patrons or businesses being conducted there. So, if, however, we are putting on a spaghetti night and our spaghetti night, we are exercising control over and there's, we're gonna be serving to the public, then we're, we've got a problem if we are now serving wine with our spaghetti.
Right.
Or the people who are coming to the spaghetti night for Marion County Public Schools are being served alcohol.
Right.
If we had a district-wide retirement celebration and we had a cash bar at said event, that this is the district recognizing these retirees, district employees who are retiring, that we offer, they're, at the venue, not on school board property, but at the venue, there is a cash bar available, that would be in violation of said policy?
Yes, I believe it would. Now, here's the backdrop. The backdrop is nothing in Florida law prohibits this anyway.
Right.
This is.
This isn't illegal.
We, we, there's, right, so, so we could specify any realm of this that we want to with the apart, apart from, you know, I, I, there's probably administrative code that says, you know, we can't actually serve alcohol on campus for, you know, consumption by students or staff, but that's not, that's not what we're even talking about.
Right.
So.
Yeah, like Golden Apple.
Like.
Can we, can we do a recess? Can we do a recess right now? We're gonna recess at 1:31. We're back on with our continuation of our Neola policy. And we were just having a conversation prior to recessing concerning the alcoholic beverages and public school attendance, so we wanted to make sure that we were, I wanted to make sure that I'm clear. That one of the things, question I had was about the Golden Apple event and making sure that we're in compliance with that, so. Attorney, take it from there.
Yes, sir. I would suggest that what we do is, Dr. Gullett and I can work on the details of this policy as it may apply to specific factual scenarios and try to come to something that, that gives us a few options to choose from that are going to operate consistently without trying to have to run through, you know, 20 or 30 different factual scenarios and, you know, create distractions. So, I, I think that if I can, if I can work with the superintendent on trying to make sure we come up with something that both from an administrative, administration and administrative procedures and as well as, as legal perspective works for the board, then I can bring forth a couple of options for our next set of Neola meetings for us to, to choose among or from that I think might take into consideration all of the concerns that would be expressed whenever we start dealing with a policy of just whether there's a strict ban or a, or some, some leeway under the policy.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, and, and it's, it is our intention to be legal, but that isn't the, that isn't the big thrust of policy. Policy is, in fact, policy, and that's what we want to drive this. So, it needs to be realistic, it needs to be appropriate, it needs to be minimal, and it needs to be legal. Thank you.
Well said.
All right, we're gonna move forward and we'll wait on that one coming.
Okay.
We'll move to the next one.
And I will remind the board, as I believe was introduced earlier, we, there's, there's also, we have some need to stop at about somewhere between 2:00 and 2:30 today. So, we're gonna go forward until that time, right?
We're gonna go to 2:00 o'clock, we'll adjourn at 2:00.
Okay. All right, so moving forward to our next policy that's on our list.
Should be relations with special interest group.
That's also pending edits from staff. We'll re- get, we just got in some new edits on that. We haven't been able to get those unentered yet, so.
Okay, so then we're going to 9700.
Does this take my turn?
01.
Here you go. One moment, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right. I borrowed my paralegal's charger and then let her laptop fail, so she's shooting me daggers at her eyes right now, so, sorry.
Good boss, good boss.
All right, so, we'll find that answer out in a moment. If, if, if we have been able to input those, then I'll bring it back right away. Otherwise, we'll move on to advertising and commercial activities?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can remember the questions that were brought forth in this policy, but I don't know if there were staff edits that were made to said questions.
I don't see that there were. No.
The, the questions were related, actually, on page 1047 in the General Advertising Guidelines. We're referencing any advertising that may become a permanent, this is actually Section B under General Advertising Guidelines. Any advertising that may become a permanent or semi-permanent part of a school requires prior board approval. And we had conversation about that because currently, anything that's happening, there we go. That's, that was the question, any advertising prior approval of the superintendent. That was part of what we had discussed, because we aren't currently approving when a banner goes up in a gymnasium. And, and I'm not, and I'm certain superintendent there means his or her designee, which may mean the principal, which may mean the athletic, et cetera, et cetera. So, okay, that was the change that I knew that needed to be made in this policy. I don't know of anything else directly.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I could add, Ms. Campbell, the, also that would pertain to things like large logos, Facebook, YouTube, corporate logos, signs, I, I would think. And we would just give approval, if, if in fact we want to use those corporate advertisements, because they're corporate logos.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, I'm not understanding the comment. This is in reference to if someone actually is, is a sponsor and they're paying for this? When would be a reference of a Facebook or a YouTube logo?
Well, just the use and representation, the advertisement. We wouldn't have received funds, but we're, we're, we're advertising a corporation.
So, for example, if we say, you visit our Facebook page at such-and-such?
And, and when our, when we go out, we've got, you know, often, we've got a great big YouTube.
Right.
That logo, their logo. So, I would just say that, that to make it consistent, we would have to approve that as, as used, whether we're paid for it or not, the, the question is that it's going.
I understand, I think, what you're saying, Chair, if I may, say it's an example for Young's Plumbing. And then, you know, there's their phone number, and then nowadays, it's very common to have the Twitter chick or whatever it is, the Facebook logo.
Right, sure.
Along the bottom, so technically, you're advertising indirectly.
So, we would just approve that, and along with this, to make it consistent and recognize the fact, because sometimes it goes up and it's the third of the page, not just the bottom.
Understood.
Okay.
Fascinating.
So, you're saying, you're talking about indirect advertising?
Non-paid-for advertising, it's still advertising.
I got you, I got you.
Regardless of whether funds came in.
So, technically, we could like, so technically, we could be advertising Twitter, Facebook, or something like that.
And we do, but we're sort of advertising ourselves, but we're actually advertising them, we're the product. So, what I'm saying is, to be consistent, we, we would need then to approve that.
I think we need to call them and get some revenue out of it.
They're the billionaires. They're the product.
So, it.
Well, this does specify media-based electronic advertising.
So, even though, like, on our website, where we say we, our Twitter page, our Facebook page, and all that stuff, isn't that the same thing, kind of?
It is.
It is, and we need to approve it like that. I'm just saying to be consistent.
So.
Or if we say, "Visit our YouTube channel," or "Look online at, you can view"
Our board meeting.
Our board meeting today on YouTube.
Yeah, and I think underneath it, it will have like the Twitter.
It'll have the YouTube logo when you go to that page.
I think that's a, there's something, when you sign up, there's a user agreement or something
That you have to use it?
That you're automatically using there as logo.
Maybe, maybe not, but, but we can approve it if we do want to do it. That's, that's my point. In other words, we have to, I think we have to recognize it for ourselves as well as everybody else. So, if we're actually speaking to, oh, golly, basketballs or, you know, I, I can't think of the other potential things that we might put up to advertise something that's on the front page.
I'm sure it's in the terms of agreement that you use when you sign up for those accounts. But you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Brown, that is something that.
I'd just like to see it be consistent, that's all.
I mean, that's the purpose of this policy, when you read it all. So, by stating that, saying that it requires prior approval of the superintendent, are, are you asking that it actually needs to come back to the board?
Not necessarily, but just whatever procedure we use, it needs to be followed, especially when we put out something like that, because it's very prominent. In other words, we have to be consistent.
I think if we're giving that discretion to either the board or the superintendent, then that permits a situation, what I wouldn't want to see, and I don't think the board would want to see, is for us to run afoul of some advertising guideline because of the fact that we announce
Right.
that we have a Facebook page and you can go there. Or we use Twitter, or we use YouTube, and as part of that, you know, the common thing is people put the Facebook F on their, you know, logo or whatever to show that that's, that this is the way to find, instead of saying, "Look us up on Facebook at," instead, we just show the Facebook F and say, you know, that indicates that we've got a Facebook page, it's a hyperlink. So, as long as it doesn't create a, if, if it's within the discretion of the, of the school board or the superintendent, then we've got a body who can say, "Yep, that's fine, no further thought need to be entered into." Because I wouldn't want it to devolve into, "Oh, we can't do that because it contains a corporate logo." You know, we'd have to.
Or perhaps we should be paid for it, that's the question that I get. Are we being paid for this? Look at the size of that ad, look at the size of that YouTube logo. And are we being paid for it?
No.
And, and the answer, of course, is no, and why do we have it up there? In other words, it's a private company.
So, where people know where to find, like.
To contact.
So, for example, people that want to watch the school board meetings, they know to look on YouTube, so that's what.
Right, they're very clever how they do it, and I'm saying that all we need is approval to be consistent with everybody else, with, with our other requirements.
In, in actuality, the argument is actually with the FCC or federal regulation guidelines to ensure that those private companies operate like other media entities, is what you're really asking for.
Well, I'm, this is our, this is our policy.
No, I understand.
So, I'm, I'm just saying, our policy needs to be consistent, and, and that's all we have to do is approve it like we would approve anyone else.
So, we, we also know that Cox Cable Channel, I think it's 12, covers the Marion Educational Channel. So, we also reference that. Cox is a private company, but they provide that service to have the Marion Education Channel. But they also are governed by different guidelines, FCC, et cetera, et cetera. I, I understand your argument 100%.
Well, and it could be a.
Channels of communication to distribute information out via private companies that frankly have not been federally regulated, so the, the question is, is actually.
Well, it could, it could be a source of revenue, for example, of lower bids from Cox. If, in fact, they wanted their logo up there and we, in fact, allow it to be there, and, and it's, it's a, it's a business decision because it is a logo. And it's not, it's not that we're trapped into it, it, it is taking place. That's, we don't have to go too deep into this, other than if you get half the page that says YouTube, then we ought to get paid for it, or a question why, why it's up there.
Here's my question, though, to that, while I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
My question is, are we paying YouTube to put all of. My question is, are we paying YouTube to put all of our information out there? Because I don't believe any money is changing hands either way, and so they're also allowing their platform for us to publicly share all of our meetings, that we're also not paying for. So we're putting their, yes, we are putting their logo on our website, but we're also using them as a service to distribute our information publicly and freely without any money changing hands.
Right, and that is, that is the model.
Call Mr. Browning.
Okay.
Ms. Thor was trying to say something.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just wondering if under N, it says a superintendent or designee is responsible for screening all advertising. So I think in, in that sense, you know, we have that protection, that somebody at a high level is looking at it. But I'm intrigued by what Board Member Browning is saying.
Yeah, screen it or, or approve, and if, if we get the approval in, then, then we know why we're doing it, and we know that we, it was a considered decision, because we are the product, and they are a billion-dollar operation, so it's an incredibly effective model. And we are the product, like Facebook, anybody is that uses it. You don't pay, however, they become the billionaires. So that is just the model. And if you want to put a great big one up, it's our screen, we decide, and you can put it, you can use the model without putting up the logo. You can, you can give any instruction. So it, it's a, it's like somebody putting up a big.
Absolutely.
Sign at a ball field, on, on our, one of our, one of our fences.
I'm on our homepage right now, and it's not on our homepage, so maybe it's on a different page, but there is not a logo of any other, there's not a Twitter logo, there's not a Facebook logo.
Not even along the bottom?
Not even along the bottom, no, ma'am.
And if there is, we should be paid for it, because we're putting something up.
I mean, this is our homepage. There, again, there may be in another page, but we do not have any.
Some of the pages are, it's half.
Superintendent, do you have anything you want to say on this one?
Chair, the only comment I would make is that we do not pay for any of those services, and that was a question that was asked earlier.
I'm fine with making the policy the way it is now.
Me too.
The item C, I do question, though, that says the board reserves the right to consider requests for advertising in schools on a case, case basis. Should that also be superintendent?
Yeah, I would rather include the superintendent.
Under item C as well, please.
What do you think, Dr. Pellet?
Thank you. I think that it certainly impacts the board quite a bit. If a school has a banner they want to put up, it would have to come to the board, rather than, than operations.
A superintendent or your designee.
Correct.
I mean, we don't want to hamper people, you know, shoestring.
Right.
You know, a banner. We want the schools to be able to continue to do what they're doing and, and move forward, without having to put so much red tape bureaucracy in it.
Approval by the superintendent, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
We good?
Yes.
Charter schools.
All right, charter schools.
This was the last one on that list.
Yes, nine eight hundred.
Yep.
Oh, this one was.
We have seven minutes.
This is, this one should be quick, too. This is page, actually, 1,050 is where the question, this was one that Neola probably has updated, that I'm assuming is.
Because we're not the only ones who can approve them anymore, I remember that.
Right. One zero five zero.
Nine eight hundred.
Ninety-eight hundred, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, there we go.
It's at the very top, actually. So this should have been updated by Neola, because that very first line is no longer accurate, because the school board does not have oversight for all charter, or is not required any longer?
Yeah, go to.
Neola does have an update that we need to put in.
Pull, pull the Florida statute, one zero zero two point three three.
Well, I think that may, the statute may be a different number now. But he, Ms. Attorney Whitmer said that there is a new policy for this, so that's just a new.
So we'll just wait for it to come back.
Right.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we've arrived at the stopping point for today.
May I, real quick, let the board know the definition that, in conjunction with Mr. McFadden, I'm gonna insert in the policy regarding a school safety officer. The definition we came up with, since there is not one that is specific within Florida law, but describes it by the, by what he does, not what he is, we put those together to come up with, "A sworn law enforcement officer who is employed by the district's school board for the protection and safety of school personnel, property, and students, with the power to make arrests for violations of law on district's school board property." Okay?
And we have one, and we have one of those in our district.
Correct, and that meets with Mr. McFadden's approval, as to this definition, and based on our conversation.
And what was the word used?
School safety officer.
School safety officer.
School safety officer.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go around.
Sorry.
Terry?
Okay, ninety-seven hundred did not have any changes, if you wanted to look at that.
Just go ahead.
If not, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Relations with special interest groups. What do we have pending edits from staff? Okay, I'm gonna remove that request, because I have an indication that it's receiving, that's pending edits from staff. I don't see any, so I need to make sure that one wasn't sent, that I haven't managed to get uploaded yet, so.
I mean, there's some stuff on it, on it, in green. Pull it up, Terry.
I'm just not cer, yeah, we'll pull it up, but I'm just not certain whether.
I've made them.
Whether in the last couple of days we've received.
Okay.
Suggested edits that we haven't had time to put in. So I'll have to go back, because obviously, we've been in an intensive process here. So, do you want to, do you want to just skip this one, then?
We can look at it real quick.
Look at it real quick, okay.
Yeah, I'm happy.
That we changed, for sure, the materials section. The question that I believe was waiting on staff was actually under item D, solicitation of funds. Okay, that's the section. Let's see what this is.
Right, and I think that, that's, that's why we have a note that's pending edits from staff, is we, we just have this, and it's a, a couple of items that are.
So there are a couple of things that have been taken out, yes, both of those lines there, which were the questions, because we were talking about specifically payroll deduction types of things that were made for specific fundraisers for various organizations, and if those funds were deposited into the school account, for example, to write the check back to XYZ organization they've been fundraising for, and it looks like staff has recommended to take those lines out.
All right, if these do meet with our approval, we will, if they, if we receive or find out that we have received any additional staff edits, I'll bring this one back when we reconvene at our next series of sessions. But otherwise, as of now, if we presume that this is the entirety of what the edits are, is removal of those items, that meets a board approval?
So I, right, my, my question wasn't the, the other question I had wasn't about the line that's been removed there just above prizes. So this, I, I had asked about, okay, so removing that first section, I understand. So copy this policy, as well as relevant administrative procedures, okay. This policy does not apply to raising of funds for district-sponsored or school-sponsored activities. So that, I believe, is not what we want there, I, I think. This, I think, I, I need to make sure that, going back to the original.
Disagrees with the deletion.
So this is special interest groups, okay, yes. So this policy itself would not apply to.
If you can articulate that, I'll, I'll tell them.
Raising funds internally through a payroll deduction of some kind, perhaps for our own foundation of sorts. So, okay, I'm fine with that. But then removing of that, "Board does not permit or sanction the use of crowdfunding for district or specific school programs or activities, including co-curricular, extracurricular, curricular activities." That was not something we discussed. So if we are marking through that.
That's a board recommend, that's a.
That's a staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation.
Okay, so just for consistency, that's not something we discussed at length. So that is a new staff recommendation.
And I will also indicate that, that I believe Neola does not concur with the deletions that we have here, and would recommend that, at least in part, these deletions are not made. And I'll let Mr. Whitmer speak to that.
Well, I don't, I mean, I just saw that the first deletion there.
Which one?
Is about the deposit in the, in the internal funds. The board disclaims all responsibilities for the protection or accounting for such funds, solicited funds, or not to be deposited in any regular or special accounts of the district, has been struck through, meaning that they could be deposited.
They currently are.
Is that what, what we want? I don't know.
I, I mean, I, the reason this conversation was brought forth in the beginning was because schools hold their individual fundraisers for XYZ organization, and my assumption had been, and I believe since staff is now striking this, they concur, that those said funds raised in said school are put into the school's account, and a check is written to that organization. And if they are supposed to be holding them in a separate account entirely, then I'm not certain that's what's occurring right now, because that's what this says. Solicited funds are not to be deposited in a regular or special account of the district, which would be a school account. And we already said in our previous policy that they can only have one checking account.
And it says, "The board disclaims all responsibility," so the board is assuming the responsibility by striking that.
So you're recommending we keep a portion of these two sentences, or just, or?
Do, do we want to disclaim responsibility for the protection or accounting of such funds? If so, that shouldn't be struck.
I, I wasn't recommending striking it. I, I'm, the whole reason I brought it up was to ask specifically about the statement, these used to be on two separate lines, "Of solicited funds are not to be deposited in any regular or special account of the district." That was my question. But this has come back with staff recommendations to delete both sentences.
Now, Superintendent, do you have any recommendations?
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm checking. I, I have received information as to the second strike through, per our chief financial officer, that we do have crowdfunding in schools. So that would be explaining item number two that you see on the screen. I do not have any additional information at this time on the first one.
So let's do this, just send it back. Right. So let's put this back and let it, bring it back to us, and then we'll have, we'll just send it back.
Yep, we'll just bring that one up later.
So Superintendent, any final remarks?
No, thank you very much.
Nicole? Terry, Mr. Powers, any comments?
Only that I will work to get the, get dates set for the next sessions we have. I do intend to set us a date for all staff edits to be in for this one, so that we have a final sort of deadline time, so that we have time to get everything entered in. And we don't, we anticipate that hopefully this next set of dates will be a finalized set, so that we have all input and are prepared to present the board with everything that we have so far.
Attorney Whitmer, anything?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Chairman, I enjoyed participating and look forward to finishing this project.
Thank you.
As do we.
We do, too. We do, too. Me, too. Ms. King, glad you're back. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Thor?
Thank you, everyone, yes, and do your best to stay warm this weekend, don't get hit by any falling iguanas or geckos or.
Mr. Browning?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Vice Chair?
Thank you. This is important work of this district, and I'm grateful that we are, I'm in this with all of you, so thank you, and see you all in Tallahassee next week. Yes, future boards will thank us as well.
Yes, one of our primary responsibilities as board members is policy. So if people say that they've seen us here all week doing this, this is our job, this is what we're supposed to be doing. And so I just want everybody to know that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. Exactly. So, sometimes I think, they think we're supposed to drive the bus, cook the food, and all those types of things. This is what boards are elected for.
Especially your grandson.
Yes, especially my grandson, yeah. So, with that being. With that being said, again, we thank everybody, and listen, I want to give a special shout out to our camera crew, our audiovisual guys, because they have been here all week with us, making sure that we are seen, and that we're being transparent and communicating out to the public. So I thank them.
MTI Cafe.
In real time.
In real time.
MTI Cafe, they can serve delicious.
Huh?
The MTI Cafe today.
Yes.
They serve the delicious brunch.
Oh, as well, yes, MTI Cafe, listen.
Cafe, they've fed us all week.
If you guys get the opportunity to come over here, come, it's a nominal price, very nominal pricing, they have great, great food. So these kids do an excellent job, so thank God for these kids over here, so good job. And the staff here, and the administration here, so thank you. With that being said, we will adjourn at 2:06 PM. Have a good weekend.